Night and day. Be with the council tonight and just give us the courage and wisdom to do what's best for the town and the citizens in everything we do and say, and give you all the praise and glory. Jesus Christ name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, I call a meeting order. We're turning it over to Eunice and for our special recognition of tonight.
Do I have this now or? All right. Remember how to do this? Point and click? All right, let's see. So as the last council meeting, Jacob came and he presented his Eagle Scout project to you guys and he went into what he planned on doing at Blair Mill. And I am excited to say he's actually finished with it. So he has successfully completed his project. And the Parks and Recreation Department just wanted to award you a certificate of achievement for choosing us to do your project. It was really a hassle for Jacob to find somebody who accepted his Eagle Scout project and was willing to work with him. So I'm just really happy that you chose us. It really means a lot for him to come out and he brought his team of guys. I'll let him show you what he's done in the park over there. I just think it's incredible. So Jacob, I'll give it to you and I really appreciate all you've done for us.
Thank you. So the project went really well. So yeah, so I put the, we put the benches right around that parking lot. And then I have pictures of us building the benches and then being the hole for the posts. That's us mixing the concrete for the benches and me supervising very professionally.
I was noticing that.
And then here's one of the finished benches and then here's all the benches finished together.
Great. Very good.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Eunice, did you want to get a picture?
Of course.
Yeah, Dad, come on. Yeah, Dad, come on up and get a better picture with you.
And what troop number, what troops are you with?
I'm in troop 144.
Where is, where is it?
Uh, we're at Blair Mill, no, Blair Road, my first church.
All right, thanks again, Jacob.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll see if we got any people signed up for public comments. I don't think so.
Yes, sir.
All righty, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes, AGC there, one through five, then we have the Divide Golf Course Tribal Movement Settlement Agreement, Duke Energy Settlement Agreement, D amended budget ordinance 6A, and then the Mac McCauley Contract Update. Does anybody have any questions about any of those or are we good to go?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Richardson to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank y'all. Next up is reports. Nothing officially, but certainly with the election on Tuesday, David and I were out working the polls. I'm sure some of you, Heather, you were out working the polls, weren't you?
I wasn't this time.
You weren't this time, so certainly proud of the way Stallings voted. So, you know, agree or disagree, but I agree with the way Stallings is doing it. So I was proud to be the mayor and the results that came through with the town.
Turnout was excellent, too.
Turnout was very strong for midterm, so that was fun to see. So, but we have Melissa Merrill, Stallings resident, lives in Emerald Lake, Graham's territory district, is now a member of the county commissioners. And so first time in a long time that somebody from this side of the county has been on the county commissioners, so I welcome that. So that's all I have. Brad, you got anything?
Nothing for me.
David?
I went to, Chamber of Commerce had a State of the Union meeting or presentation with Chris Platte and Mark Watkins, county manager and executive director of economic development over at Rolling Hills. So it was a big crowd. There's only three or four elected officials there, so it's mostly residents, but Craig Horn of Weddington and Richard Helms of the county commissioners and myself, I think were the only elected officials there for all of, all of the county. But it was pretty enlightening. They were talking in some detail about the sewer needs, water needs, they're separated. I mean, we think of them as together because our honor bill is together, but a number of years ago, they took care of the water separately from the sewer. So that was basically in place, the supply of water is almost complete and will be adequate for growth for years and years and years to come. Sewer is a, still a major headache. And if the last project or the only project, the project they've got in mind now does not go through, there could be and probably will be at least a 10-year delay in new projects because of the cap on capacity. Once they hit 95%, nothing's going to go through. And I think it's 12 Mile Creek is going to have a minor increase. I forget how much it is, but it's not going to affect a whole lot up here. But they said that it would be a 10-year process from citing a project to sewage flow through. And if that, and they're just, they're just behind the eight ball, if you ask me. We're not taking care of this issue a long time ago, but anyhow, that was most interesting.
All right. Thank you, David.
Can I ask a question of David?
Sure.
Just, I mean, and maybe Melanie, what, what options do we have, I mean, on that front? I mean, is it, we just have to suck it up and deal with it? Is there any legal ramifications that we can, we can do?
I don't know. I wish I had a solution.
Okay. All right.
Want people on this side of town on the county commissioners.
Well, we got one now.
We got one now, we need two more.
All right, well, I don't have anything else.
Heather?
Nothing here.
Taylor Ray? Graham? Well, as a follow-up to David, it's funny you mentioned that water and sewer. I had lunch today with my brother. He's the fire chief in Harrisburg and they are in the same exact situation as we are. They put a moratorium on their cap on, on building because they're landlocked like we are. They don't have a major river rolling through and they have to buy water from Concord. So I thought it was interesting that they're in the same position and keep an eye on what they're doing. Maybe we can learn something. I don't know. They got a new town manager, I believe. I think she's brand new. So I don't know if you know her or not, Alex. I'll get it, I'll get you introduced to her.
That'd be great.
Have a joint meeting, you know, just possibly learn from each other, so. All righty, turn it over to Alex. Any reports from you?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I've got three staff reports. First is going to be from Ms. Nichols and the next two will be from myself. So Erin, can I turn it over to you for the first report, please?
Sure. Mayor and council, I just wanted to give you a report on the AV system. We have identified a, the glitch in the system that's been causing us to be down a couple of times. And the technicians for the company are going to come back to us with a proposal. So right now it is working well. So we hope to get that proposal back so that we can ensure there are no more glitches moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Next two updates. Quickly, staff have been working with Union County Economic Development Corporation. As you all know, the town has developed an economic development plan. And part of the implementation was to partner with Union County Economic Development Corporation as well as Wax saw for a cost share on a position that would be housed with the economic development group. And we would get about 10 hours a week to help start really implementing our economic development plan. However, the county's likely sewer capacity situation is having us rethink after a conversation with the economic development staff, what the scope of work might be for that position because it could really change the way we approach economic development, given there's likely to be a, a dead period for sewer capacity. So staff are working with economic development staff to kind of evaluate that scope of work, see if there's a new or altered scope of work that's needed. And we're anticipating right now tentatively coming back in the January timeframe with some more information to the council. Second item, appreciate the board approving the Duke Energy invoice payment. So that'll allow us to really start work with North Carolina Department of Transportation on an updated interlocal agreement that will allow us to transfer responsibility for that project from the town to NC DOT formally and with the hope that we're still looking at late spring, early summer where DOT can get everything together and let that project. So that's kind of where we stand and that concludes the staff report. I appreciate everybody's time and attention.
All righty. Any other staff have a report or chief, you have anything for us tonight or?
So just that our, you'll see our annual no shade November for charity to go to Hometown Heroes, Child with Kids.
You've started?
It's about four weeks, bro. Because I started.
Because I shaved mine yesterday because I couldn't take it any longer. And mine was like my Brian, so.
Hometown Heroes is a great charity.
No doubt about it. So I appreciate y'all's support on that, chief. All righty. Karen, did y'all have anything or?
I don't.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Marshall, you're on later tonight, so okay. And I think that'll do it then. So next we have the agenda approval. Anybody have any additions or amendments or deletions on, on the ideas on the agenda? Kind of get a motion to approve it?
Go ahead, David.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Air, second by Mr. Richardson.
It was the hardest one you've had all night.
Ayes have it. All righty. DFI, thank y'all for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us, Mayor and Council.
Wow, you're in person for the first time, I think.
Yes, you get to see us.
I wondered who those folks were.
Yeah, so I'm Sonya Turner. I'm a project manager with DFI and I'm joined by my colleague, Eric.
Yeah, hi.
Eric Thomas, Assistant Director with DFI.
And we've had the pleasure of working with your town manager and staff on doing an analysis for the feasibility of a town center for Stallings. And so our presentation is up here, so let me go ahead and put this in presentation mode. Yes. All right, so we're just going to take a few minutes to cover the overview of the project, current conditions, our market analysis findings, and then talk through next steps. As a reminder, we love to take a little bit of time to remind, excuse me, we just like to take time to let you know who we're affiliated with. We're with UNC. The UNC is the largest university-based local government training advisory and research organization. We work to serve local governments specifically around real estate development and finance. And so we're working on projects all across the state and even some outside of the state of North Carolina, from anything spanning from downtown revitalization, some downtown master planning, downtown revitalization, neighborhood revitalization, affordable housing, and sort of everything in between. If it is a question that local governments might have around real estate development, they bring us in and we provide that expertise. And we have the project team listed here. And so just a reminder on our scope, what we were brought in to do, we are here to evaluate the feasibility of establishing a downtown district and attracting private investment to assist with this vision. And so our analysis includes looking at current market conditions, doing financial feasibility analysis, and then providing recommendations related to the implementation of that. And pending the outcome, there's a potential for phase two engagement where we then take that program, that development proposal to partner solicitation, so developer solicitation. And this is just a diagram that shows what our process is. So we look at the market, we look at tax parcel data, we look at the financial analysis. I think what really differentiates us is we really try to understand what those interests are of our local government partner. And we take all of that together to pull together final recommendations. And so this is just an overview of sort of the timeline. That October 31st date you see there is when we did a preview of this with staff. And so we are at, in November, of course, and, and just in the, the process of our site and financial analysis. And this is just showing you where we're headed. We're targeting early February to have our final recommendations. So these draft project priorities, so these were identified by conversations with staff and reviewing different plans and proposals that are currently in place for the town. So first thing, and, and I, just to back up a little bit, we like to identify these priorities because it's important for us to know what target we're reaching, right? We want to make sure that when we're doing our analysis, we are meeting exactly what our client is looking for. And this really helps to serve as a basis for making sure that we are meeting your objectives. And so we, we like to do that in this phase of the process. If we move on to a phase two, then we would actually invite you to, we would revisit these and then invite you to publicly endorse those priorities. That's really important and helpful then for the private community. And ultimately, these priorities would be used to evaluate those private development proposals that come in. So again, these are draft, these are not final. This is just for our first phase, but this is where we're starting. So create a mixed use town center destination for the town of Stallings. Anchor the development to the town's existing town hall and municipal park. Improve streetscape to enhance the pedestrian experience for the new town center and surrounding area. And then lastly, optimize public investment and attract private investment. So again, these are draft, but these are sort of those initial high-level goals that our team have been tasked with. So area context, whenever we go into a community, we want to understand what's happening on the ground. So within Stallings, just shy of 16,000 population, there's been a 9% increase in population between 2015 to 2020. So you've been growing slightly more than the county. Your median age, 39, pretty much unchanged during that same time period, but your population is slightly older than that of the county, but it has remained somewhat steady. Median incomes are pretty healthy at 90,000. That's 9% higher than the county. Your unemployment rate is at 3%, lower than the county, and you see there who your top employers are. It's also a very highly educated population with 47% of your population having a bachelor's degree or higher. And lastly, a largely commuting population. And that average commute time is about 29 minutes, so just shy of 30 minutes. And as you're aware, Old Monroe Road serves as a major thoroughfare primarily going north to Charlotte. So this is just a snapshot of your community. Probably none of this is new information, but we like to understand that whenever we're in a community. And so we then look at tax parcel data to understand, okay, what's happening as far as ownership and, and what does the sort of geographic makeup of the area look like? So the study area that you see here was developed in partnership with staff just to understand what's happening around the site, what's happening around the area of interest. This does not mean that this entire area was analyzed for redevelopment. Rather, it just means that we wanted to understand who are the common owners, what are the uses surrounding the site, what is, what's sort of going on around this area? And we see that it's largely low-density residential, commercial, and industrial uses. So looking at the site specifically, so the site that was identified, we've really identified it as three development pads. There's a site that the town acquired, just adjacent, right next door, that is identified as Pad A. Pad B are the two residential properties that are to the west of Town Hall. And then Pad C is right across the street, directly adjacent to the park. And those development pads total just over six acres. Of course, they're adjacent to the town hall and the municipal park. So we want to highlight assets when we're thinking about the site, and one of those being proximity to Old Monroe Road. So your traffic counts are just 27,000 north of the site. And so that's just telling us that there's a lot of traffic and there's quite a bit of visibility, too, as well, from Old Monroe Road. So those are things we want to keep in mind. Now, in analyzing redevelopment potential and catching some of the earlier conversation as we walked in, there are questions around sewer capacity, right, for any development that happens on this site. And then lastly, just based on our analysis and conversations that we've had with some developers, there's been a question around, because historically there's been low-density residential development in the area, that that could impact retail and the ability to attract sort of a dense amount of retail, that could make it a bit more challenging in the near term. Now, these are all considerations. I'll talk through the market analysis and be able to unpack and, and ask questions or answer questions. But these are the site details that we have. Any questions before I move on to the market analysis?
Can you talk about the low-density attracting, attracting retail development? Is there a distance that, from the, from the, from this area that people are willing to travel that you, on average, that, because that $90,000 is above the county average, as you mentioned.
Right.
We've brought that up to developers many times and they were surprised.
Yeah.
We know that, but they didn't know that. So, so you know, maybe the 90,000 is over on the other side of, the majority is on the other side, a large majority is on the other side of 74. So is it, my question is, is the average that retail people look for, for have the density that people are willing to travel?
Great question, Mayor. So we think about it in terms of looking at like a one-mile radius, if you will, from the site. And we actually, a little later in this presentation, we looked at some case studies, some other town center communities. And what you see is that there's a, this ratio, this interesting ratio of daytime population or heads and beds within proximity to an area. And right now, the site has a lower ratio of the number of population or heads and beds. So not so much to do with the incomes of the population, but just the physical number of people within sort of a mile radius of the site. And, and again, we'll talk, I'll touch on that a little bit more later, but because of Stallings' physical location, being sandwiched in between two competing markets, your Matthews and Indian Trail, we, there, your, your residents have options. And so we, we don't look too far out because then we start getting into drive times and, and someone choosing or being closer to the Indian Trail, like shopping, concentrated shopping or Matthews. So it is more within that one-mile drive time versus the income, if that, if that answers your question. Okay, great. Any other questions? All right. I'll keep going.
I got another one.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you're going to cover this. How do you attract private invest, attract private investment?
Yes, so we're, that happens, so that would be in a follow-up presentation when we talk through recommendations, but this market analysis will help tee up things that private developers will be looking for and, and different thresholds, amount of retail or amount of residential units that would be attractive to them. But the, the nuts and bolts of, you know, some of the different strategies, that will not be covered here. That'll be in our next update.
February?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
And then remind me, you know, Brad and Alex, this is phase one, so that's why it's only three sites, because obviously downtown is more than just these three sites, so.
Yeah, a great question. I think the idea now is really we need to kind of create an impetus, hopefully create that investment that will ultimately create the ripple effect and start ultimately leading to that private investment. So the reason we chose these is because we have site control over those.
Got to get started somewhere. I agree with you.
That's right.
Well, I think at the retreat two years ago or last year, I remember an action of taking the downtown small area plan, Alex and staff drew a red mark around, there was a name for it, maybe just phase one or area one. And we voted that that's sort of the area of concentration for the, this phase. And then we bought the big parcel A, which was a big move on our part, so.
And I was at a town council retreat, I think it was two years ago, as part of the panel to discuss sort of the downtown vision that you all had crafted as part of the small area plan and then talk about some of the challenges associated with realizing the vision that you all had established in terms of site control. That was one of the primary things that kept coming up in the conversations was, okay, we have the town hall, we have the two adjacent properties to the east, and we have the town park to the south of the road. Can we realize our vision by having limited site control? And that was essentially part of the driver around, is there more opportunities for acquisition to unlock the potential for development? And so on this screen is, these are the parcels that you have control over right now. There are other sites and other parcels that could service your downtown core or be included, and we are going to be evaluating that, but in terms of you being able to hold and unlock the development potential and craft, and essentially dictate what you want to see occur, that's what you have control over right now.
With your permission, and I met with every property owner on Stallings Road, probably from Monroe Road to Industrial Drive, at least send an invitation. Many of them came to Town Hall, met with us. We talked about the downtown vision, planned, showed them some schematics, talked about retail, residential, streetscape with, I would say 80% showed up for a meeting, one-on-ones. So it's been a lot of work gone into just communicating the idea, and it was fairly positive.
All right, I'll keep going. So this next slide, we'll, I'll walk you through the market summary. And you were provided, I believe, with the, sort of the full presentation. And so there's some background slides that I'm not going to cover because of just the amount of time, but that information is available to you. And, and of course, I can zoom to a slide if needed. But, so the summary. So first, I'm going to start with retail. We know that there's an, an interest of really increasing the amount of retail on this site. And so what we see when we do our analysis is that there is a market demand for just shy of 500,000 square feet of retail over the next five years. When I say market demand, we draw a geographic market area. So this is not just for Stallings, but what we draw is a retail trade area based on making sure that we are not tapping too much into some of the competing centers. So I think we're looking at a drive time of, of just 10 minutes, shy of 10 minutes, because again, you have Matthews right there to the north and Indian Trail to the south. And so we're trying to understand within that drive time what the market demand might be. Those individuals who are leaving could be captured in Stallings. And so we see the average market rents are at $20 a square foot. So to summarize what's happening with retail, there's been strong population growth in this area, I think you're aware of that, but there's been limited retail construction, largely because of the pandemic. And this may suggest pent-up demand. So what we're seeing is within this trade area, there's been strong population growth. And sometimes with the limited retail construction, what we would expect to see is a high vacancy, a higher vacancy, but actually there's a lower vacancy for retail in this area. And generally, whenever there's a lower vacancy, that tells us that there are potential businesses that may want to move into the market, but there's just not space for them. And so we think that there could be some pent-up demand, but there is still sort of the caveat of retail has been impacted by COVID. And so we're in a little bit of an interesting time, but that said, we do think that there's opportunity for retail within this market.
And once again, restaurants is included in retail.
Correct. Correct. So next, we looked at office. The market. The market demand for office is about 126,000 square foot over the next five years. Market rents are a little lower than retail at $17 a square foot. For the office market, we look at all of Union County. What we see is that new office deliveries are primarily for medical and public uses. So office has been hit really hard by the pandemic. And particularly, again, we're in this interesting place where hybrid work schedules and work from home are really sort of impacting what office demand looks like over these next years. There's just a lot of uncertainty around office. And so on the next slide, I'll talk through sort of the specific market implications for the site. But that is something to keep in mind when we're thinking about offices that what's largely driving office right now in this area is the hospital. Aside from that, there's not much delivery. Next, we looked at multifamily. And we have a market demand over the next five years of 1,000 units. Now, what's important to note is that the market demand is really closer to 2,100 units over the next five years. But there is a significant pipeline of units. And what we do is we subtract that pipeline from the market demand to get to what we believe the demand is over the next five years. So there are some large projects, primarily in Indian Trail, that are still leasing up. They're not at a healthy vacancy rate yet. And so all in all, there are about 900 to 1,000 units right now living in that pipeline to be absorbed. And so we believe that there is a demand over the next five years of 1,000 units. That translates to roughly three to four multifamily projects over the next five years in this market. And so again, just looking at the analysis, we believe that, given the types and scales of projects that have been delivered in this area, that there is a good demand for multifamily. But we also want to temper that with the high vacancy of some of these newer developments. We would definitely just watch that, just to, especially when thinking about the timing and delivery of any potential units on this site. And then lastly, we did look at hotel. So hotel is thought about a little bit differently in the development space. So we try to understand occupancy rates. 68%, generally, I'd say, healthy hotel occupancy, I mean, maybe a little bit higher. But what you find is that all of the existing hotel in this area is clustered along US 74 and I-485. And so I'll talk about this a little bit more in the next slide. But where downtown is currently, we would not recommend a hotel yet. As downtown builds and you sort of build that, that density and that activity, then that is something that could be considered in the future. But for now, and again, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself, so why don't I just go to the next slide? So Stallings Town Center site opportunity. So what we do is we take all that market data and then we look at the site specifically and determine and try to understand what this specific site can handle or what share the site can support of the larger market. And what we've identified is that, again, retail, there's pent-up demand. However, there are competing retail centers, Matthews and Indian Trail, which will impact Stallings' retail demand. And so because of that, our recommendation is about 10% of that market demand. We think that that's still a healthy amount of retail. And you'll see in the next slide with case studies, we, we believe that that could be supported on this site. So up to 48,000. But again, with the note that there are some competing retail centers. And so that's something we would continue to keep in mind with our analysis. Office, I mentioned, largely being driven by medical and public. And so we would say that for this specific site, there would be limited opportunity. It's not something that we would recommend, but also not something we would completely throw out if there were maybe a tenant or someone identified. But just in this uncertain office market, we, we are identifying that there's limited opportunity here on this site. For multifamily, we do believe that this site could support one of those three to four projects over the next five years. So that 200 to 300 units. Proximity to amenities, Old Monroe Road, make it pretty desirable, those high traffic counts that I was mentioning earlier. However, as I mentioned, that high vacancy in the large pipeline may impact the timing and the delivery of those units. And then lastly, for this specific site, we are not recommending hotel for the reasons that I mentioned at this time. And so sort of that, the key takeaway is for the site, we believe the greatest opportunity is to explore those retail and multifamily uses. I'll pause here. Any questions?
Well, just since we're on public record, I'll make it clear that I certainly support your number on retail. We're not going to be Matthews. You know, they have a structure, infrastructure in place. It's certainly, we can't duplicate because we don't have the square footage, town space to do that. But I want the residents to know that multifamily, we're talking about townhomes, not rental apartments. And that's, you know, that's my vision for this, for this area, not rental apartments, but townhomes, just like we're building across 74 near the hospital.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, part of our work is to do the feasibility analysis to answer your earlier question on what it will take to attract private investment for this site. So we will definitely look at lower-density options. But we will also model sort of, you know, all scenarios to, to give you that picture of what financial, what will be required to make the project financially feasible.
Well, the other barometer I always litmus test is quality of life for our current residents. And rental apartments do not provide quality of life for our current residents. It just adds more traffic. So that's why townhomes, they have an investment in a, in a community.
Well, question first and then a comment. Your 48,000 feet of retail, 10% of the market demand, and you define market to be a mile, excuse me, 10-minute drive. Does that, is that a standalone demand? What I mean by that is if there were multifamily in the market area, does that add potential square footage to the retail demand? I got confused when I saw these two. I get limited office, not recommended hotels. It looks like we're going to be looking at multifamily and retail for the sites. I don't, you might have to help me what 48,000 retail looks and feels like. I think you promised to sort of talk about that in case study.
Yes, I will, yes.
Maybe I'll wait for that question. Now, my comment though, and I never disagree with the mayor much, but I think in the, in the context of a downtown plan, I am not ruling out sort of support for a luxury apartment facility that is for rent. I've seen several in Durham, Chapel Hill this weekend, I was at one for the express purpose of animating the park and putting retail around it. I don't think you get there with townhomes. So we may just have to talk further about that as we go. By the way, rents in some apartments are now $1,800, $2,000, $2,200 a month. So it's a different type of apartment, I think we're talking about here than you might be thinking.
And as exciting as all this looks, and I'm sorry, I peeked ahead.
You can't do that.
I did. We've got this massive problem hanging over our heads in this county of the lack of sewer.
I think we need to think about legal action personally.
Well, that's, that's a different day for that comment, discussion. But, okay, so regardless of what all this, how good this looks, if there's no capacity, what happens?
And, and great question. And we've been talking with Alex and the team about that. That is, that is the million-dollar question, if you will, right? Yes, multimillion. So what we are doing and what we will do in our financial feasibility analysis is analyze what the town's potential participation or what solutions there may be to help address the sewer capacity. We have met with Union County Water and Sewer and had a conversation with them. And there are some steps that potentially could lead to a path forward. But it, it does just open up a, a larger conversation. And there's also, we have reached out as well to Mecklenburg County as well. So that is going to be included in our analysis. And when we do our feasibility analysis, we want to, we will share a project that is feasible and that will show what will be required to make it feasible.
I look forward to that.
Maybe I can talk, Brad, about that question that you had regarding the multifamily. Would that drive the interest for potentially retail to come on site? And how did that 48,000, in terms of a capture rate of about 10%? How the retail percentage or retail demand of square footage was calculated is primarily on vacancy rates that are currently in the market in the trade area and also in the projected population growth within the trade area. And so whether that's townhomes versus apartments, that population is projected to come into the trade area, which will ultimately drive the demand for more retail. Now, so in terms of that population demands an X amount of square footage of retail within the trade area, the, the demand projected based on 10% capture rate of the trade area is roughly 48,000 square feet. Now, if there is a mixed-use development, a developer would be much more excited to put some X amount of square footage of retail on the site if they have those bodies, those people right living upstairs or right back, back behind them. That essentially gives them that population within a walking distance to support the retail. So how that 48,000 square feet is essentially considered is it's a mix of population growth, which those apartments or those townhomes would drive. And then also, what is the current vacancy rate?
Yeah, thank, thank you. And I guess my question also was, what does 48,000 feel like?
Right.
Does it feel like a town center with 48,000 retail and a, and a great park?
Yes, and, and that, and that will, we'll talk about that on this case study slide. So that's a great question. So what we did is we wanted to look at sort of current conditions or within the town of Stallings, so that one-mile demographic, specifically population within one-mile radius of the site. And what we are proposing as far as of retail and residential units and how that compares to a couple other communities. And so first, we're looking at Morrisville. So these communities, there's not going to be a direct case study exactly like the town of Stallings. Every community is different. But we wanted to highlight this town center because it is one that's pretty recent, coming online and interacting with the very real market dynamics that we're experiencing right now. So they're in negotiations right now with the developer. And the plan is that they start in 2023 sort of with groundbreaking. That's a seven-acre site. They have about 14,000 people or 6,000 housing units within a one-mile radius. And you'll see their retail is around 35,000 square feet. So what we're proposing of up to 48,000 within this particular program is able to achieve that the town center feel. Now, with that, there is some other development, some public investments and things happening around this. But just for that retail comparison, you'll see that this developer is also adding 230 multifamily units mixed with some townhouses to help give a diversity of housing type. And then there's parking there. The next community we looked at was Matthews Gateway North End. So that was developed 2009 to 2012. That development was six acres. You'll see 6,800 people or 3,300 housing units within a one-mile radius. Now, this development has office, 35,000 square feet. Retail is a little less than what we're proposing up to for this site. Again, a little different environment because it is sort of building off of some of the retail within downtown. But this particular site, which I'm sure you're familiar with, has sort of created its own kind of retail center within sort of that larger context. This development has a few residential units, so only 81. And then all the parking here is surface. And then lastly, we did look at Mint Hill Town Center. That was developed 2007 to most recent 2017. It's an eight-acre site, a few, so fewer people within a one-mile radius. You'll see a significantly larger office, square footage. You'll see retail around 30,000 square feet. So to the retail question, there is a, that up to 48,000, we believe, is enough to create sort of a retail center. Now, one of the things I, I want to highlight here is you see that as we go back in time, office is really seen as that anchor used to attract that daytime population to support the retail, right? In the Mint Hill example, you have office, you have retail, you have no residential units. So we start to move a little bit to 2009 to 2012. You see, there's still quite a bit of office, but now we're introducing some residential units. To now fast forward to a development that's currently being negotiated, there's no office. And the heads that they're getting are coming all, completely from the residential units. And so I think these case studies offer sort of an interesting glimpse in how the market has shifted over time to where before office was creating that daytime population that could drive and support retail. To today, developers in this case study and also in other projects that we're working on are turning more towards multifamily or residential to provide that population or to support the retail that they're putting in.
Sonya, don't you, go ahead, baby, sorry. I should raise my hand.
But you were talking while I raised it, so you go ahead.
I always defer to the mayor. It, it feels to me like office will happen in our town by the hospital. You said demand in the, in the county is medical and something else.
Public, yes.
So I feel like we're going to have a fairly large percentage of office development. A new office tower is planned, a medical office tower in addition to the one that's there now, maybe even a second one. I'm not sure. Do you remember the plan?
I remember the second one.
Plus some out parcels around, will be some restaurants, will be retail, I think. This is all the plan from our development. So my thinking is, office takes care of itself down at the hospital, which is a mile away from retail down here. So I would think we probably don't have a lot of office in this area we're talking about, but we do have significant office development over the next decade by the hospital. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
And does that then drive and keep retail healthy, a different kind of retail down here? Chain retail, I'm thinking, probably down there, Panera, whatever was in the development proposal by the hospital, maybe McDonald's without the gaudy signs. Okay, whatever's in the head, showed some out parcel retail development. Here, less, less chain, more coffee shop brewery kind of stuff, supportive of each other is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so great question. So it, it does, and, and that's of course something we would analyze and look at. But it, it does sort of open the question of connectivity to that office site. And would individuals at that office site, if they're supporting retail around that, would they leave that to come to whatever happens here? The hope is that, yes, there's probably going to be some connectivity there. But the office that's happening there, we anticipate that for this site probably wouldn't see, at least at this point in time, much of that, that traffic. But Eric, would you speak? Yeah. Yes.
Seems that, to me, an important demographic of not only the people be the average income in the census tracts of that one-mile circle. Do you have that available?
I do not, but I can, I can, I can pull that, yes.
It seems logical, but maybe it's not. You can tell me why or why not. But why, if, if it's a higher, higher income or a lower income concentrated in that mile, what kind of retail you, we might expect or not?
Well, that's a great question. And one of the things that we do look at is, and this is where proximity to Old Monroe Road plays a, a big role, right? Because within a mile, the, the income may or may not be comparable, and, and we can definitely look at that. But the traffic counts and the, the population coming by the site also will play an impact in the type of retail. a, an impact in the type of retail as well that could be attractive. So we, we wouldn't just want to limit it to the incomes, um, just because the site is very well, um, positioned and and quite visible to attract individuals, um, or some outside of that. But yes, that's a great question, and and I will put that on my to-do list to, um, get that information for you.
Well, that was sort of my point on those, the townhomes that we're building on, just north of seventy-four, you know, they're four hundred thousand dollar townhomes, you know, very fast. And so me, if I'm a retailer, you know, I see, how many units is that down there? Anybody remember? Two hundred and fifty, something like that? I don't remember. You see, two hundred, two hundred, let's say it's two hundred townhomes that cost four hundred thousand dollars. You know, that that gets my attention if I'm a retailer, so.
Yeah, well, and it it is important to note, too, that, um, you know, just even looking at these case studies, um, that heads and beds conversation really is, um, is is a big one, right? You look at the Matthews Gateway North End, so their population within a mile, um, that's a roughly, uh, a thousand more housing units, um, than what's currently within, uh, a mile radius of this site. And so whereas with, um, so when we're, we're thinking about, and again, we'll, we'll explore the feasibility of all of it, but that is a consideration is, um, you can have a a lower density product, um, but it's really going to boil down to that, that concentration of households or population, um, within that, that mile radius of the site. And I'll, Eric?
Yeah. Where, where is Matthews North End? Where is that? I'm.
It's right near fifty-one and up. Good Jekyll and Hyde, the, the Rocky Mountain Chocolate thing is, the Jets Pizza.
Oh, that's it, that's what, Witch Witch is in there?
Yeah.
Attack on to the old traditional downtown.
Gotcha.
And I would say one thing to consider with the townhomes concept versus, say, a multifamily development is, right now, the town center has four acres of town-controlled land for essentially realizing your vision when you're thinking about a townhome product. And we can study this and say, on four acres of these non-contiguous, I guess it's six acres roughly of non-contiguous, how many townhomes could you legitimately fit there? You're going to be pre- left with a pretty small program of residential that maybe won't have the population that drives the success of the retail. So if you're thinking about mixed use, that is going to be one consideration that would have to be, you know, made and then thought through is, what kind of program can you kid? If you're trying to recoup the investments in the land, how much is ultimately the land worth if you have fifty townhomes versus, say, a multifamily development? And that's something we're going to study and look into in terms of that feasibility analysis. Just something to think about in terms of what kind of programs would be supported, a lot of trade-offs.
Well, this really concludes, uh, my presentation, just a few considerations and next steps. Um, the first is that we've identified that the greatest opportunity for the site is, uh, retail and multifamily uses. Um, based on this conversation, we will explore, um, multifamily, we will explore townhouse, we will, uh, do that feasibility analysis, and next time we come before you, we'll, we'll share that with you. Um, there are those questions around sewer capacity, um, and we will, in our feasibility analysis, uh, model what that means and and what strategies would need to be explored to address that. Uh, again, the site is non-contiguous, um, so, uh, to what Eric just shared, we are just going to have to think through, um, what can fit on the site and the feasibility of that and and what that practically means, uh, for, uh, as far as development dollars. Um, and also to an earlier, sort of nodding to an earlier conversation, um, the total acreage that we are looking at is smaller for a typical town center development. And so as part of our recommendations, um, we will explore, you know, what does it look like, uh, if there's additional acquisition and and what, uh, the town can achieve. Um, and so our next steps, we're going to perform our site and financial feasibility analysis and provide those final recommendations by February. And and we'll connect with Alex, um, a- about, about the timing of that, so.
Sure. Can we go back to that bullet there? I mean, because, I mean, the four point four acres are acres that we directly have full control over. But, I mean, again, I mean, when we talked, you know, two years ago, it was, you know, not necessarily that we had to have full control over all, all the acreage that we were looking for for downtown. So when you say that it's smaller, d- does the case studies that you presented, they actually had full site control? The town owned all that property?
We can talk about, I could talk about the Morrisville example for days if you're willing to listen to me. Um, I've been managing that project for seven years now.
Give us the, the three-minute version.
They don't own all the property. They don't have site control over the entire town center vision, which is greater than twenty-five acres. Their first phase that they're under negotiations with are the private developers, are roughly seven acres of private development. They want to build a three acre town green. You are ahead of the game in terms of those investments, having your town green already constructed and already award-winning. They're, they're looking to do that same exact thing, but in this first phase. So their first phase of development is roughly ten acres. Seven acres dedicated to private development, three acres for essentially open space amenities, um, to support what they want to achieve in their downtown core. Now, that's phase one. They have multiple phase vision for realizing their town center. A developer originally, we went out to solicitation on a four acre site, much like, I would say, track A in this concept, where it was roughly four acres. It had the capacity to have one multifamily development with some ground floor retail. There was a lot of, I'd say, um, wonderful information that we received from developers of, the demand was there for multifamily, the demand was there for retail, but how can we achieve phase two, phase three, phase four? If we're going to put retail in phase one, we want to be able to ensure that we can do phase two, phase three, phase four to, again, create that destination. And that's where developers said, we want to push back on the amount of retail, we want more multifamily in this first phase, knowing that there was questions, concerns over how are we, what is the direct path to achieving those future phases that will create that can, that sort of cohesive vision or that one vision for their, their downtown? And so that was something that we ran into as a hurdle, not, I would, I would say, the town made it over the hurdle, they acquired some other key parcels to unlock larger development pads to get to that ten acres roughly of three acres for a town green, seven acres for the private development. And so that was something that was something that scared away potential development partners was not having enough to realize future phases also to support primarily the retail they were going to put in in phase one.
So the, the town, as you said, the town did go out and acquire those extra pads?
They did. Um, and it, and it happened, it was more of, things fell into their laps in terms of owners. They didn't really have a, an aggressive, let's pursue parcels and and get a broker and start to really do our, our outreach. It was more of opportunities were presented to them that they then jumped on. Um, however, uh, with the negotiations with the developer that are taking place right now, there's all the knowledge in the world that whenever that breaks ground, those parcels around first phase are only going to go higher and higher in terms of what the costs are to acquire. And so when is the right time to potentially acquire more? It's, you don't want to get too far ahead of yourselves, but it's something that we were seeing in terms of Morrisville is, how do you be strategic about, um, acquisition or getting site control over key parcels? So they acquired some, there are others that they're having conversations with, and we need.
Let me say something, Brad, before I forget. Well, Marshall was in a unique position. I lived in Raleigh in the late eighties and the nineties when Marshall was first taken off. You know, there was nothing around them.
Right.
So we're in that, we don't have that luxury, that, you know, we're sort of, we're landlocked by Indian Trail, Matthews and Mint Hill. And so, uh, Marshall, you know, they've done a great job, you know, acquiring land, but, uh.
Well, they're landlocked right now, too.
They're landlocked now, but they did a good job back in the eighties and nineties acquiring that land.
Well, when we first began our evaluation with them, they had ten acres of of town-controlled property, um, adjacent to their public town government complex, their town hall, their planning offices, their fire department, their chamber of commerce. They acquired many more additional parcels, essentially based on developer feedback that was received during their first solicitation, but also just on, if you want to realize your vision and you want to be able to control that vision, you need to control the property so that you can essentially say, this is what we want to see happen. This is when you all as a, you know, you're in the real estate game, this is how you can play in the game is by controlling property and finding the right development partners.
Well, there's so many jobs in that area with RTP and Cary, right? Sandwiches.
Right, I mean, just down the road from town center is the new Apple campus that supposedly is going to be breaking ground, um.
But they do have planes flying over at eight thousand feet, though.
Yeah, they've changed their zoning recently and unlocked development sites based on noise ordinances around the airport. I mean, they're right by Raleigh Durham Airport. They're in a very strategic location as, but in terms of where the town center is located within Morrisville, it's on a, they built this wide boulevard, but very limited traffic and limited visibility. So it's not like it was a slam dunk for a developer to come in there. There was questions about visibility, about whether retail can succeed in that location and what a developer, you know, what developers altered, said throughout the entire solicitation process was, we'd like to push the multifamily product to get more units so that it can support that retail in phase one.
Right.
No, I was just going to make a final comment and a question, um, just to really Steve. I, I, my, my opinion is we're done buying land, with the exception of that small parcel, maybe by Community House Drive and Stallings Road, that would complete parcel B there or track B. We, we've been on the record saying we should assemble that parcel if we can. I think we bought parcel A, and that was a stretch and a very aggressive move and a very expensive move. So in my opinion, w- we as a board have said through two retreats now, two cycles of elected officials even, that we're committed to a downtown plan, we want to know what it takes, and if we needed to buy a parcel, we would opportunistically, and we did that with, with a lot of money. I would just remind everybody, this, the way, my experience is, and I used to do this for forty hours a week, um, y- y- it would, we'd be terrible public servants if we kept buying land. It would be, it would be an exercise in futility, we should be fired, um, be- because there are developable parcels all around, including the corner we haven't talked about there, Monroe and Stallings. If you recall, Alex and I met with an Indian Trail parcel, it's not on the map, but some multifamily developers have bought a piece of land that's a trailer park now. It's in Indian Trail, but it's easily walkable to the park in a decade, again, as things move. So my point is, we should probably not buy more land, we should partner with developers to put the town together. My question, and that was, that's my comment, my question is, I'm still thinking about what forty eight thousand feet looks like, square feet looks like. Our plan calls for street retail along parcel A, the three houses beside us here, uh, up to the corner of Stallings Road and down, so I'm curious, do you get a streetscape of, of, you've seen our streetscape maps and visions with a pedestrian path, brick pavers, frontage with Stallings Bicycle Company, whatever.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Do you get forty eight thousand feet retail in any sense of place?
Yes.
That's what I would like to know.
That is a great. Yes, thank you. That's a great question, and and that really, uh, uh, goes into that last bullet point there of our site and financial feasibility. And so, um, our next phase will be to, to meet with you, counsel and share development scenarios of how, what that forty eight, up to forty eight thousand square feet look like. Uh, we can say, just based on preliminary conversations with staff and some preliminary massings, that, uh, there are some options, uh, available to help create that town center, um, that, that town center feel that you want. But, yeah, that's, we'll be able to explore that more in, in that next phase.
Average Walmart is approximately a hundred and eighty thousand square feet.
Yeah. Terrible example, but I get, thank you for that.
We're not thinking about that. Let's say, let's say an average.
Roughly a quarter of a Walmart.
An average restaurant, and I'd say an average would be four thousand square feet of space, four to five thousand square feet of space.
Okay, that's helpful. That's the coffee scale I'm looking for.
Thousand square feet of space, um, how, how, so I, when you're thinking about, you say, oh, the chain store is down by the hospital, further down the road to support all the hospital users, more boutique, say, smaller scale, coffee shops, taprooms, things of that nature, you're looking at about a thousand to maybe four thousand square feet per, per tenant mix. And so we're, as Sonya mentioned, as we dive into the site analysis, thinking about what a, you know, again, our task is evaluating, Brad, to your point, what can you do with your controlled property that you have right now? We're going to lay that out, we're going to re- test the feasibility of that, we're going to hopefully come up with a con- concept that is compelling to you all to think, say, to say, this, I could, I could see this as our town center. We're going to evaluate what those metrics are in terms of, you know, what kind of development costs could we see here? What would be the private investment return utilizing site A, B, and C as, as the development sites? We may run into, when we fi- finish our financial feasibility of, this project is financially challenged based on one development cost today, based on the potential for income of the, you know, the site constraints. Um, that's all stuff that we're going to, we're going to go to and and hopefully tell you the story of what we believe is, is a path towards realizing your vision of the town center.
I do. Sorry, Brad, wasn't last.
That's it.
Your last question wasn't last.
No, that was my last question.
Your last. I've been thinking about this for a while, and I've seen examples of this, and I think it's something that's been in the back of my mind. So I'm going to ask, does a project like this or any other of these other town centers, and I know Matthews has done this in their other buildings, where they have a true public-private partnership with public y- type of facilities within that structure? Like Matthews has a town center, government center with a library.
Right.
Where I grew up, up in Ohio, they've got meeting space, dedicated meeting space for the town to have civic groups, um, in the building that they, public-private partnership, so the upper floors are, are, bottom floors retail and the town usage, and the upper floors are re, uh, mostly upscale condos and stuff. But does that help the situation? Is that something we can consider or?
Yes.
Considering for us? I mean.
We, uh, I think we are definitely going to explore that. Um, based on what, well, going back to the Morrisville example, if, if, if you would, um, we, the town has a, a demand for roughly four thousand square feet of space to support parks rec. Um, part of the strategy for alleviating the concerns from the developer for, how do we fill up twenty thousand square feet of retail for our first phase, knowing that's a goal of the town of Morrisville is to have retail activate the town center, is to create a flex space where the town can lease that space as the town center gets a portion of it, not all of it, a portion of it for public use, then ultimately as the town center matures over time, vacate that space as more tenants express interest. So it's a strategy, one, to get a tenant in place from day one to, to, you know, take over some of the space that may be challenged, uh, you know, as you're trying to develop Stallings as a retail center. Um, that is a strategy that you all have the ability to, to employ and something that we will evaluate. Um, so, yes.
All righty, well, I certainly appreciate y'all coming out tonight. It's valuable information for us to digest, and so just thank y'all for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's good to see y'all in, like, real. Man, it's been like two years for you.
I know, I was virtual for the retreat, yeah. Well, thank you for having us.
Yes, sir. All righty, Eunice. Parking rec. Forty minutes ahead.
All right, let's see. Uh, that's okay. I'll introduce Tori before and then we'll, we'll do all that fun stuff. So Tori, do you want to head up here? So as you guys know, we were on the hunt for a special event cornator. We've been with that one for, what, six months? I think, so I've been doing a little bit of double duty. It was going to be hard to give it up. Uh, didn't realize how easy it'd be after six months of doing it by yourself. And so after a long search, we had a ton of people apply. We came across Tori. She already has kind of exceeded my expectations. She recently worked for Union County Parks and Recreation as a park ranger for five and a half years, going on six. She's been nothing but awesome for our department and really expressed interest and, you know, didn't want to ruin those ties with Union County, which I think was super important. So she actually is still really close with her old department. And it's really awesome that, you know, she has that interest in Union County, growing it, really making it awesome. Just to brag on her a little bit, she came in her first week and I was like, okay, we'll get the event schedule and just have it ready by January first. And then that Friday, she was like, here it is. And I was like, oh, this is going to be fun. I was like, we're going to have a good time. So I just wanted to introduce Tori to you guys. If you have anything to say a little bit about, like, your background?
I'll put me on the spot. Well, as Eunice mentioned, um, I was a park ranger at Union County for five years, well, five and a half. So if any of you guys have ever been to Canyon Creek Park, you've probably seen me there, milling around, doing whatever, enforcing rules, cleaning, checking in campers, running the camp store. But I always sort of had a passion for events and just, I was always the planner of my family. And so I saw the job opening and I was like, well, it's still within Union County. And I think, you know, in today's age and how hot it is down here, I'm originally also from Ohio. So I was like, oh, I don't know if I can keep doing these heats and the heat in the summer. So I was like, let me apply and see where it goes. And here I am.
There's Tori.
Welcome to the chaos.
Yeah.
No, it will be fine.
Oh, y'all get ready. We're gonna have some fun next year. It's gonna be, whew. Thank you, Tori.
Is that an official goal, fun?
Fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. We actually changed our mission statement, so just fun. Alright. Speaking of fun. So I wanted to come in front of you guys today with kind of a proposal that I have for the Parks and Recreation Department. So what I have for you today is we currently have budgeted a parks maintenance technician for our department. So that is in the budget. We have it ready to go forward. And I really thought it served the town an injustice if I didn't at least stand in front of you guys today and give you my vision of what I see for the Parks Department. So this kind of goes into what I wanna tell you guys about and propose. So right now, we have a maintenance technician. But I'm looking to switch the title to a maintenance supervisor. This would include moving the pay grade scale to match with what we've looked at for the league. And really, we wouldn't have to amend the budget at all this year due to lapsed salaries. So there would be no change on that end when it comes to this. But when I came across our maintenance team, so as you know, I've been here for almost two and a half, going on three years. I think the biggest thing for me when I started was the town's appearance. I've talked to Alex and our team and I think that's something that we've struggled with in the past, is really just getting that top-notch look for not only our parks, our future greenways, our current greenway that we have now that's gonna link us to Francis Beatty Park. So these were the challenges that I see personally. Our seasonal staff, we really don't have any. We have two part-time staff that work year-round. So they don't even classify under what you would truly say is a seasonal staff. Our maintenance organizational chart, our part-time staff is the same exact job description as our full-time staff. So there's a little bit of gray area when it comes to what jobs need to be done by what parties. Long-term planning, I think, is a little bit of an issue where we lack on. You know, the park, if you guys know, our equipment is getting on that ten years. Stuff is quite literally falling apart. And it's just happening, you know, and we're trying to pick up the pieces. People are coming to us. People have came to y'all in the past with park problems. And that's what I really wanna eliminate. There's no reason that people should come to you guys before we see it in our house ourselves, truly. And then also the limited skill set. What we have right now, you know, we have a great team of people that are willing to work above and beyond, but their knowledge of certain areas only goes so far. We have the splash pad that's in the park and that's something that we get outsourced right now. You know, we have a company that comes in, they help set it up and they help winterize it. This is something that we really could bring in-house, extend the hours, if we did have the capabilities of getting seasonal staff to really help this service for the community. This past summer was the first summer that we've had it up and operating truly in the past three years on a routine schedule. And that, it took a lot of time. I came in on a lot of weekends, came in on the Fourth of July. And like I said, we only have two part-time guys. And you can only ask someone so much when it comes to putting chemicals in the system, running this really big pump house. I mean, it's a huge, it's a huge deal to run something of that size. So that's where a maintenance supervisor could really come in for our town. This would be someone who would work very closely with me. They would report to me. They would work on our greenway maintenance, our park systems, really getting in a structure for this kind of stuff that gets done at our parks and greenways. They would oversee full and part-time maintenance. So essentially what this would mean is making sure that everyone's getting their job done, our facilities are clean and kept in the manner that we really think they should be. They would also train and hire the seasonal staff that I truly think we will have in the future and that will really benefit us as a town. You know, we could really start utilizing high school students that wanna get more work hours in, that wanna get that experience, that live in town. That's something that I really think we could do in the future. They would also work with our new community service program that, I know I've touched base on you guys a little bit about that, that we've worked with Karen, HR, getting everything core-ordered for us. And that has been nothing but really a positive experience so far. But that would be another way, you know, we're really gonna save money in the long term having those people come in. And at minimum, we've seen people that had to serve at least twenty-five hours. So that gives us a lot of time to really help the park. And also lastly, just offer that wide skill base that, you know, we're kind of missing. So this is just a list of their duties that kind of broke it down for you guys to see. Obviously splash pad operations will be a huge deal, the scheduling of part-time and seasonal staff. Like I said before, training will also be a huge thing. So onboarding any of these part-time and full-time maintenance staff to get them up to speed. Also oversight of the greenways and park projects. As y'all know, we're gonna have Privet Park that's really gonna start breaking ground soon. That's already in the budget. This greenway will hopefully be finished by spring of next year. That's gonna be a huge deal. And then Blair Mill Park really has a lot of work that needs to get done to it. So these are some things that, this is just scraping the surface of what really needs to happen for this town, in my opinion, to get that structure in place. So we really can make everything look nice for you guys and not only y'all, but the community. I mean, this is, we see people come in and out, in and out, and they absolutely love it. But I, I don't think our park's there yet. We still have the standard that we haven't even achieved yet, in my opinion, that we really could get to in-house with a supervisor to oversee this, to collaborate with. So I'm just coming forward for you guys. I would love if you would approve the job reclassification of the full-time maintenance technician to a maintenance supervisor and also coincide with the pay grade that Karen and I have discussed with and looked over to the most current job classification study that was approved by town council. And I'd love to hear any of y'all's questions, concerns, or what y'all think the vision is for this position? Because I really do think it's an important and there is money in the budget to do it now. So I think that's a great asset that we have to work with.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Or her, or Alex, or Marcia? I'm sure this is a financial decision as well.
I mean, I do.
Alright, Stephen, go ahead.
I mean, so what kind of pay difference are we talking about? Just out of curiosity.
So on average, what would you, you would see next year is probably between a ten and fifteen thousand dollar increase in our salaries and wages. And that's just going between the minimum and maximum of what this job is right now and the improved grade scale.
So in some ways, like, maybe I'm wrong, but is there any overlap between Public Works and, and kind of this role? Cause in some ways, there's, it feels like there might be some overlap there as far as at least activities. But is there, is there any potential overlap there?
Well, I think that's the big reason why I'm looking to get this supervisor, is we really do rely heavily on Public Works to do a lot of these park projects. And the park is essentially not their top priority, you know? It's not saying that they're willing to help us out whenever we need it. But for example, our only full-time maintenance staff was sick the whole week of Stallings Fest and also that weekend. So, you know, that happens. We have one guy out and there, that's gone for us. We have no maintenance staff. Truly full-time for our department. I'm just working with part-time staff who honestly, they don't have to be here if they don't want to. You know, we schedule them, but it's not that full-time relationship. So we do have to rely heavily on Public Works. But I, I think if we keep doing that, we're never gonna get to where we need to be.
So do you see kind of two wings of Parks and Rec? Kind of the rec side and then I guess the park side? So you would have kind of more maintenance and keeping things and then kind of more the events and activities kind of side?
Yeah, correct. I mean, I think that just encompasses whatever recreation department is. You know, recreation departments do all the park maintenance. They do all the greenway maintenance. They do plan the events. You know, and I think it's my job as a director to oversee all that and make sure that everything is to that standard that you guys want. And I think putting this in place will do that.
Alright, David?
Yeah.
How many full-time staff are there in Parks and Rec?
So currently, we have a full-time office administration. We have me as the Parks and Recreation Director, the Special Event Coordinator, and a full maintenance, full-time maintenance technician. So that puts us at four. And we are currently budgeted for five. This would only be switching the title.
How many?
Yeah, two hard time?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a hard time so far understanding the need.
Okay.
Supervisory position that jumps the minimum from, of pay grade thirteen, from thirty-eight, six, to pay grade eighteen, which is a minimum of forty-nine, three.
Correct.
For a staff of four or five, part, or total, but full-time and two part-time. And I know there's growth coming next year.
Right.
Maybe, or hopefully.
Right.
I'm thinking that this might be a little premature and we might be able to come up with a better structure that wouldn't up that. I don't wanna lay you in there.
Right.
A department that's that small, you have the talent to manage that.
Correct.
At size, that's what I think.
Yeah, and I don't think I couldn't handle it. I think the standard will not be there if it's solely me, truly. And we looked at, you know, this wasn't just something, a number that I pulled out of a hat and was like, I really think this is what it needs to be. You know, I sat down with Karen and we compared to Knightdale, that's right outside of Raleigh, after discussing with Erin, that has the same sort of growth as they do. You know, they're a town located right outside of Raleigh. They see the same things that we do. And it truly is just one of those things. I know that we're small, but we're just gonna keep growing and this is gonna put us ahead of that growth, is how I visually see it. And I see where your concern is with, you know, me being able to do that.
I think you can, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but if I, I'm out, there is, I think that's where we struggle. You know, it's great that I can do all this and I can juggle it. I think that's awesome. I'm not saying I'm not capable. But if I were to leave, I think it would put y'all in a really rough spot. I'm, I'm just trying to set the town up for success. And I think when we do get there, I, I wanna be ready. I don't want us to have to juggle when the town does grow. I think this is putting the steps in to get us to this point.
And the other part of this is, I think a big time-consuming piece of the puzzle is the maintenance of the splash pad.
Right.
I really think we need to farm that out to professional service. That already has the chemical training and the insurance that they need and whatnot. The guys that handle swimming pools are the same people that can do that. And I think us, we're always behind the eight ball trying to get such-and-such done or the chemicals just right. And I really think that would, if we outsourced that, that would free up a ton of time in the summer for you and your staff.
And I could see that being an asset and it might be a conversation for another time. But when we start relying on another company, we're kind of putting it in their hands for them to come out and service it when we could do that internally.
That's sort of how we did the landscaping, of which we're quite excited about how good it is.
Right.
Ever since we've done that.
Right.
So that's the same logic I'm using on that is, we're very, very happy with the job they're doing by outsourcing it. Takes a huge load off of our staff and allows them to do the other stuff. And I think the same thing with the splash pad.
And I, I could see where you're coming from for that. And that, I guess we look at more of the grass as a full-time and Alex, if you wanna chip in, that is totally fine. It's, I just really, truly believe in this direction. You know, if this is not where you feel the town is right now, that's okay. You know, we have it approved for a maintenance technician. So no matter what y'all wanna do, we're gonna have somebody that will come in onto our team. I just think that right now, with the money in the budget as it is, that we have it and we could do this, it's setting up the pavers for where we need to be.
Any other questions? Any other council members?
I had just a question. Eunice?
Yeah.
You said you were budgeted for five positions.
Yes, sir.
I counted four, you, event coordinator, full-time office admin scheduler. This maintenance technician, who's the fifth one? What's the fifth?
Did you say our current maintenance technician already?
I don't know. That's, I guess, you have four on staff and you have a vacancy that you're not.
That's right.
Exactly, correct. It has not been filled yet.
But, and, but this is position one of the four.
This is position number five that has not been filled.
Okay, this is the fifth one.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to add, Eunice and I have interviewed a couple of people for this maintenance technician. And one of the reasons that we, we came up with this is the skill set. We, we could bring somebody in, just a maintenance technician. But for the amount that we have in, in this salary range, you're not gonna get any skill set. And what she's looking for is somebody that is coming in with some skill set. Because that's the problem. What they're having to do is they're having to rely on Public Works because you just have workers that, that really don't have any skill set. And with, you know, Blair Mill, Stallings Park, Privet Park, the greenways, she's looking for someone to come in that has some skill set, that can manage these workers, that can move us to the next level. It's not that Eunice can't manage these four or these five people. It's that she doesn't have the skills needed for the maintenance side of it. So that's what we're having to do, is rely on Public Works a lot for things that happen at the park.
I think a lot of what we, we talk about when we build, you know, organizations and structures with the service we provide, is, is we don't need to make them so reliant on just one or two people, right? Where if you pull that person out of the equation, it really, the, the services struggle, right? We've seen that with kind of the splash pad and a lot of different functions we have. So for me, what this is about is, we've got a great Parks and Rec director. It's about kind of taking our organization to the next level to improve it and build in that resiliency. Cause we're all gonna leave the town of Stallings one way or the other, right, in some way. And it's making sure that our organizational is set up so that it can sustain and grow no matter who's in those positions.
Alright, thank you, Alex. You have a question? Well, I'll give my two cents. You know, we're, I know we got it approved, but I'm always concerned about the bottom line. And, you know, we're one quarter into our fiscal year and now we're gonna spend some more money that, I just think it's time to pause on our personnel decisions and let's see how we get through this year and see what the budget looks like when we start in March. And see what kind of money we're gonna have and carry it over there so we might be able to afford somebody without pinching pennies somewhere else. So, so I agree with David right now. I'd like to take a pause on this.
My only thing is, I think, based on Parks and Rec, and you can correct me if I'm saying something out of, that, we're looking for a quality person. And at the price that we're offering, we're basically getting the bottom of the barrel. I mean, I'm just being blunt.
Well, and people, high turnover also, right? Somebody wins in because.
Low skill set.
And then they find something better, they leave, constantly having a.
So that's the problem that we're having.
A turnover.
Correct.
The, the money that we're offering, we can't get.
But isn't the pay grade thirteen for this position?
Budgeted, yes, sir.
Which is thirty-eight, six to max of fifty-seven, one, and we can't find anyone that?
We've had one person apply and they have said that they will not work here with that pay grade.
Just for a, just for a reference, at my husband's work, this is not for the plumbers. Just for the warehouse employees or the girls at the front desk. Their minimum wage is seventeen.
What's, what's fifty-seven workout to for a minimum?
Eight.
Thank you. Faster than I am. Does this include?
You also look at, if you bring somebody in on that pay, that, that pay scale, you have a maintenance person, you're looking at bringing somebody in the same, exact same title. And, and bringing them, it's, it's hard to bring somebody in with just a maintenance technician that has any skill set.
Alright, any other questions, comments? All right, any other questions, comments?
I'm not against it.
Right. Yeah, and this is truly, when I created this, you guys, I think it just benefits the town in the long run. I know the numbers look, you know, kinda scary. They look big, you know, this is a, a big decision. But if you start thinking of the stuff that we could start outsourcing, the list is gonna go on and on and it's really gonna rack up super fast. So Alex, do you have something you'd like to touch on that?
I just think we're looking at the front and all the questions are good when you're, you're right and you should be asking them. At the same time, I do think, long-term, having a supervisor, if we can enhance the skill set, not just of this position, but with everybody else on the maintenance team, I do think there can be some cost savings long-term. With hopefully taking in some tasks that we currently are outsourcing, so.
What do we outsource?
What do we outsource?
Yeah.
I mean, all our contractor jobs, for example. We just had the repair, uh, in the park and how much did that repair cost, Eunice? Do you recall? It was over ten thousand dollars for the, the little gated area in the back of the park there.
Oh, that had the flooding in the back? Yeah, that was about ten grand. And then you have to think about too, you know, the playground equipment from different vendors coming in that a supervisor could get ahead of these items. I'm not saying that our team right now couldn't do it. But we have one full-time guy that's essentially looking at all the playgrounds here. Looking at the playground now at Blair Mill, that's going out and working on the greenways. And it's great that we have, you know, this mowing contract, but it only goes so far. It's not saying that we've stopped doing all maintenance in the park. You know, it truly is just mowing, edging, and shrubbery X amount of times a year. It's not clearing trees, it's not getting rid of ant hills, it's not doing that constant attention that we need. So that, that's where I'm at with it, you know, and I, we could move forward and with what's budgeted. And I would be lucky if we got someone right out of high school with no experience at all, who will be trained by me in maintenance. So that, that's where it comes from. I mean, that's truly what we're looking at with what we have right now.
I just know that we've had some lighting issues over here. Would this be something that would be covered by that position?
Yep, exactly. And in the past, um, me and Public Works actually rented a lift, got up there, I put on my suit, my safety helmet, and we went up there and changed the lights together. So that would be something that would now fall under the supervisor, who could take this maintenance team that we already have in place, that's willing to do the work, that just needs that extended skill set to help guide in the right direction.
All right, where's the?
Well, Mark, I, I, I think I'm handicapped, but I don't understand how your department works.
Okay.
That's my fault. If you, if, if the presentation would have started by saying, "We're having trouble hiring a skilled worker because our pay band is too low." Here's what we should do. I'd have, I'd have been there. But I think what tripped me up was the, maybe where you guys are, this, the, the increased salary for a higher-level supervisor position, which in a department of four, five, it just doesn't make sense to have a manager and another supervisor. I'm, I'm not opposed to this. What I'm missing though is what, that, that line of conversation was the most exciting part, is that we're gonna spend X amount of dollars more, but we're gonna save X amount of dollars here. If those numbers make sense, we should vote for this. I just don't think we're there yet. I don't... I feel like I'm on Shark Tank, by the way.
No, it's okay. That's all right. I mean...
It, it really just, I, I just, I don't see the, I'm okay to wait till the next budget cycle, but if there's a compelling financial reason we should do this, because it will, 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 will do this in-house and will save me ten thousand dollars. I, I'd be okay to do it. I just don't hear that tonight. So, that's what I am. I, I'd like to have another, you another shot to bring back sort of the numbers that justify this position. If, if that makes sense.
I'd like to think about it.
I get the skill set and that's important. Um, I just don't know what the market's paying laborers today.
So, are you saying it'd be helpful, like you wanna see a overview of what the park projects would be for next year and how the supervisor would come into play? Is that, you know, like bathroom renovations and things along those lines? Okay.
Value perspective.
Okay.
And I'm still confused about what Brian's group does and what Parks does. Who's mowing what? It is my fault. I don't understand it. So this, I'm having trouble figuring all this out, so.
No, and you're not the only one. That's where the gray area is and that's where we're trying to decide this line?
So clear that up for us and you probably get, get a good vote, I'm thinking, at least for me. That's what I would say. I don't know.
All right. Any other council members? Must have pleasure to counsel to agree with Brad. Take a pause?
Pause.
Make a motion to go forward. If not, just, we'll do that and come back.
Okay, so you wanna pause the hiring, so no hiring for the current position budgeted and then wait till we come back? Okay?
Well, I, I do wanna say, I, I think we need... If we hire somebody, we're probably gonna get like an entry-level person, right? So...
Not hiring anybody. No one's applying for the job at this rate, is what I'm hearing. That, that's my, that's the disconnect.
Why would you hire another person that doesn't have the skill set? Let's, let's wait?
Well, I, I guess that's the question that we're asking, right? So you bring up a good point, but we do need to kinda fill the position, right? Like, we need maintenance help.
Can I interrupt you?
Of course.
Taylor Ray's not comfortable and she would like to leave.
Yeah, make the motion.
I'm very uncomfortable.
Make a motion to dismiss Taylor Ray from the meeting.
Can I leave?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're voting all right now, so, yeah. All in favor?
My Taylor Ray.
Motion, uh, Mr. Richardson.
I've got a baby soon.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
For the record, you're having a baby really soon.
What's the date?
I'm due in twelve days.
Do you hope it's sooner?
Yeah, yeah, very much so.
Thanks for coming.
The truth be known, though, I think we're all not having fun times.
Oh, Steve. Very something of him.
Feel better?
All right, should finish up there?
I guess then what I would suggest is what I'm hearing is, let's maybe look at the, the hard numbers. You know, projecting out what our maintenance plan will be over the next year or two. What we might be able to do in-house versus outsourcing. And then from there, um, bring it back to the board. Is that fair?
When you do that, pleasure of the board that they also investigate outsourcing, excuse me, outsourcing the splash pad for pro and con of doing that as well at the same time. I mean, a good bit of this maintenance job is the splash pad, so if we outsource it, we need to know what that bottom line cost is and how that factors in.
I mean, to outsource the splash pad, how, y'all check that every hour, I think? Is that right?
Yeah, and I, I think this is getting a little confusing. So I, I think we could really dive into this rabbit hole really deep all night if we got into the roots of what our maintenance team really does. And I, I think we might be a little hung up on that supervisor title. What the real issue is, is we don't have that organizational chart for our maintenance team. All the maintenance reports to me, our maintenance team will grow next year. You know, we don't have staff at the park all hours that I think we need to. So this truly was to get ahead of that. I will come back, I'll get all the numbers together for what y'all wanna see of those really big maintenance projects. But don't, um, don't get too hung up on that supervisor and, you know, it's gonna be this strict, like they're coming in laying the law. It really is just that skill set, the pay range to get someone really qualified and to have us set up for success as far as the maintenance team goes to get these things in order.
All right, got it.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All righty, Ruben.
All right.
How you doing tonight?
Hey, do a file. How you doing? All right.
How long you been with us now?
Go, going on four, a little over four months, I believe.
Having fun yet?
Always, every day.
But he says it feels like ten years already.
Do I look like I've aged that much since I last seen you? Oh, my gosh.
He's just talking, this is his meeting.
This meeting aged you?
Oh, this, just this one meeting?
And I'm feeling particularly put off by this particular change, just saying.
Just this one change? It's, I won't take, be easy on you, take it through nice and slow.
I'm always looking for my next junk vehicle.
Mayor and town council, um, I'm here before you to bring an amendment to chapter nine of the, uh, Code of Ordinances, uh, particularly section ninety point seventeen, the Junk Motor Vehicle Regulated Removal Authorized Section. And this is primarily only for junk motor vehicles on residential property. The reason for my request is threefold. Looking to tighten up the Code of Ordinances, uh, make it a little more understandable, easier to digest for, uh, for our residents and for anybody else who has, who has questions about it. Also, number two, to increase staff efficiency regarding enforcement and compliance of this section. And three, uh, to reduce, uh, public expenditure in regards to this, uh, this section of the ordinances. Reason for the drive, uh, my drive for this, uh, is from my professional experience in Ozil County. Uh, the changes I presented before you is what we enforced in Ozil County. And we found it to, uh, benefit, uh, the community, um, you know, uh, in regards to this position. My position being primarily to, uh, protect property value and to educate the public on ordinances. And so hopefully this provides a solution that does protect property, property value for us. Um, if you look on the left, you'll see the current section to ninety seventeen that we're gonna change. So we got the from, um, and then we have the to. I've redacted a couple of statements and, uh, sections of it. So basically looking to, on the right section, uh, permitted concealment of junk motor vehicle. One, junk motor vehicle in its entirety can be located on the real property as defined by chapter one fifty-two. Uh, chapter one fifty-two, uh, is referencing the Stallings Development Ordinance and their definition of what a junk vehicle is. If the junk motor vehicle is entirely concealed from public view from a public street, the code administrator has the authority to determine whether any junk motor vehicle is adequately concealed as required by this provision. Any covering used must remain in good repair and must not be allowed to deteriorate. Uh, so basically right there, we are giving it into the hands of the code administrator, myself, whoever else, Max, you know, uh, puts in his designation. So basically, we're making the, the ruling in the field as to what concealment is. A concealment includes any cover that is used, has to be in good condition, and cannot be in any sort of disrepair. So this covers us in any future, uh, enforcement cases where we go out and something needs to be, the covering that's used is deteriorating. We can enforce that and make them come under compliance. Uh, remove section, uh, part two. Any more junk vehicles kept for a period, any one or more junk motor vehicles kept for a period exceeding sixty calendar days shall be kept within a completely enclosed building as defined in chapter one fifty-two. I got rid of those sections out of this. And that will touch base on our, my third point in regards to, uh, keep the expenditure down for the public. Going on to the next slide, uh, this is my enforcement process changes. Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I had a couple of questions on this one here, but one of the things that I felt just that, um, a, a lot of your homeowners associations, when they say, uh, concealed, they mean from public view. They mean that it's behind a fence or, or something like that there. And I know from reading it, it means that a covering is okay as, and considered concealed. So that was one of my questions is just that. I think if somebody, if I read that and I'm familiar with the homeowners association, the way that that concealed is written in this, I mean, it, it could be misconstrued that it has to be completely unviewable from the public's street. And so that, that was the only thing that I had about that, that I wanted to point out, that there may be some language we might wanna add that concealed and covered or something, or something like that there. Because I could see where somebody reading that could be, read it in, that it's, has to be in the backyard or behind a fence or something like that there.
And so, um, in regards to that statement, so concealment, uh, is giving us, the code administrator, um, the ability to define.
Okay.
Once again, we're going by our definition, not the opinion somebody reading this could come forward to or can, can come away with. For us, the concealment is anything that's concealing that vehicle from public view. For us, it could be, uh, anywhere on the property where it's entirely concealed from public view from a public street. A car cover.
A car cover.
A car cover, yep. And I mean, depending on where our residence lives, if they do have an HOA, the HOA covers usually supersede, are more stricter than our, uh, our ordinances. We have to understand that these ordinances are the minimum requirements for maintaining property value, uh, within the town limits.
Okay, I... Ordinances are written also for people to know what's, uh, what their requirements are to meet the law. And so if it's vague, I, I just, you know, they could be negligent of the law just simply because they don't understand what is allowed and not allowed. That was, that was my only concern there.
Okay.
You know?
Yes, sir.
What, what did you, uh, scratch in the rear yard? So it's okay to have a junker in the front yard?
Uh, as long as it's covered. So basically allowing vehicles to be like in a person's driveway. So as long as they have the vehicle covered, you know, uh, cause some places may not have, uh, driveways, may just have yards. We do have a couple of, uh, couple of subdivisions that, you know, have just, uh, gravelly driveways, still intact. Fairford Plantation has, you know, most, uh, some of the homes there don't have garages. Uh, cause back at the time, garages were not a common thing for homes. You know, uh, Smith Park, uh, there is two.
David, I, I think one of the reasons for that in the rear yard part is because it's talking about a full enclosure. So think almost like a small building garage type area. Obviously, that's not something that would go in the, anywhere but typically the rear yard in this case. So I think that's the reason, those two are linked.
Maybe answer the question that I asked you during our review. The, the, the terminology was even a little confusing to me on what a junker vehicle is. So were, were y'all able to talk through that, um, cause it seemed like, I read it as an "an", you said it was an "or". So it was just kinda, did y'all get that?
Yeah, no, I appreciate bringing that up, council member. I think, uh, Ruben and I talked about it. And Ruben, do you mind sharing the approach you take with classifying like a junk vehicle versus a non-junk vehicle?
So the SDO has a, a definition of junk vehicle. Same thing with the, uh, with chapter nine, um, has a definition of it. Um, the, uh, because it references, the ordinance does reference one fifty-two. Uh, one fifty-two defines a motor vehicle, or the SDO, the Development Ordinance, defines a motor vehicle, a junked or abandoned motor vehicle that is not currently registered and does not display a current license plate. And one or more of the following applies. One, the vehicle is partially dismantled or wrecked. Or, two, the vehicle cannot be self-propelled or moved in the manner in which it originally was intended to move. Or, three, the vehicle's more than five years old and appears to be worth less than five hundred dollars.
So if I have a nineteen sixty-nine Dodge Charger
Yep.
that is in the middle of having its engine replaced, according to that definition, that is a junker vehicle.
That's a junk vehicle, correct.
Right. And, and that's the concern I have here is that, um, I mean, it, it, that, that would just be my concern. I know for a fact, we've got folks that have very expensive vehicles that they're in the middle of a repair that is difficult to find parts on. And, and that definition also, for the general statute, cars older than thirty-five years old do not have to display a legal license plate. Because there is a provision, keep me honest here, chief, there's a provision that... Because there is a provision, keep me honest here, chief, there's a provision that allows for vintage automobiles to display a license plate of its, of its manufacturing year, and it does not have to be their legal license plate. So just, just in general, my concern here is that, you know, I would not want to see somebody's very expensive hobby car towed because it's a junk vehicle. But that would just be my concern, that in that particular case, that wouldn't happen, hopefully.
No, and it wouldn't happen. Once again, it would be, you know.
But they would just have to cover it, right?
They would just have to cover it.
All you have to do is cover it.
Yeah.
And which is what we did in Ozil County. We've had people who are working on muscle cars, you know, and their garages are filled because that's what people naturally do is fill their garage with other stuff other than their cars. And he was working on it in the driveway, and we just requested for him to keep it covered. And he had a nice car cover over it, and he would work on it when he had moments, and when he was done, put the car cover back over. And in those instances, I, I mean, you know, when I personally, when I go around, I see a car cover, I am under the assumption that, oh, there must be a really nice car underneath that car cover.
Not always, not always.
Not always, not always. But when you're just passing through a neighborhood or anything like that, you, you see like, oh, there must be a really nice car underneath there. That's the, that's why we put the car cover.
Often has this been a problem?
I am currently working on two cases. One, a gentleman who had a few junk vehicles out in his, on his property, out in Fairfield Plantation. Currently been working with him, and he's been generally slowly coming under compliance. I've got one more visit with him, and he should be under compliance. His situation is that he lives on a corner lot, and he has no fence, and he has no garage. And so he, I would like to give him the opportunity to maintain one vehicle, junk vehicle on his property, but it needs to be covered. It needs to be concealed from the public view. I work also with a, a woman over in Smith Park. She has a vehicle that is, has a lien on it and is locked in place. It can't be moved by human force, can't be pushed to the backyard or anything. I would like to give it the possibility of using, using a car cover to keep it out of, keep it concealed out of public view. The main thing for this is, like I said, is to maintain property value, but also have our constituents, you know, our public be come under compliance. So, you know, that's the, the main thing. I had a woman earlier, they shared when I first came on, she had a junk vehicle on her property, and which belonged to her deceased husband of two months. And to her, I had to tell her she needed to move the proper, move the car within sixty days. She was able to do it, but it would have been nice to have offered her the opportunity like, hey, just keep the car covered and out of public view.
I appreciate you answering my questions. I know.
No, no, it's totally fine, yeah.
That I would be concerned that could fall in that category.
Yeah. So no, it's, it's not a problem. Usually when it comes to any situation like I said, like I, like I state, you, we follow what the code tells us to do. That being said, we, you know, that we do have the ability to work with people to come under compliance. Because that's the main thing, is just to come under compliance. That's the goal.
All right. Any, anything else we need to cover?
Just the enforcement process changes. So basically, we're looking to cut the amount of times that we would have to go on site. Under the current enforcement process, we'd have to make a site visit. If a vehicle is found to be in non-compliance, we then have to give them a notice of violation in ten days to come under compliance. If we return and the owner has decided to move the vehicle to the backyard and conceal it under a cover, then we will need to return to sixty days to ensure that they either have the car enclosed or they have moved the vehicle off the property for them to come under compliance. Under the new changes, we will make one site visit. If we find a vehicle to be in violation, we will set a notice of violation, give them ten days to come under compliance, return it ten days, and once again, this is all hypothetical. The owner has built the vehicle to, to the backyard out of public view from the pub, public street or has an approved covering. The property is now under compliance. So we're knocking off, you know, a return to an additional trip from going out there. Depending on what, what else we might find out there. The third thing was public expenditure. Once again, you know, we have neighborhoods who are, that are built without, have it built without garages. Like I said, Smith Park, Fairfield Plantation, Independence Village, those areas. You know, at the time, garages, attached garages, detached garages were not a, a major point for, for buildings out there. We're looking for time and money needed to build an enclosure. In my, in my time as an inspector, it would take months for a detached garage to be built, even an attached garage. So two, if you build up, build time with approximately ten to five fifty K in cost for that homeowner. Cost of towing and storing vehicles. I recently had a vehicle towed two months ago. And it was a hundred and twenty-five dollars for me to tow that vehicle five miles to my garage. And then monthly stowing, ninety dollars a month to store a, a vehicle at a storage facility. Once again, it's basically to help reduce the financial burden on our residents. Because a car cover from Walmart, thirty-plus dollars, and they, they're under compliance.
And that's a, that's a, that's an inexpensive car cover.
It is. I've had, I've had a couple of thirty-dollar covers for my motorcycle, and they've lasted two or three years.
All righty, any more, any more questions for Ruben?
One real quick one.
Yes.
I like, I, I pretty much, this all makes some sense except for it allows for them to put a junk car in their backyard, which may possibly, my house in particular, I'm thinking exactly that. And there's a lot of them where backyards are very visible to the neighbors.
The HOA supersedes.
Well, some.
I would hope yours would. You're in a strict neighborhood, right?
Yeah, but they don't have the authority that this does. Well, I was wondering what the, what's the possibility of allowing or changing that? So it says, if it's in the backyard, if it's covered, plus there's only one, not multiples.
So the, the amendment is just state only one junk vehicle allowed on the property.
Okay, that covers that. But it's not, if it's in the backyard, it's not concealed.
As long as, so as long as it's concealed from public view from the public street. I understand you're talking about you being as a neighbor seeing a.
Well, there's three neighbors.
Yeah.
On there, and I know there's a lot of other subdivisions and other homes that have adjoining backyards that look at each other.
I got two yards and three junk cars, so I feel for you. I know where you're coming from.
So for us, for me, the reason for was just to get the vehicle out of public view. We all like to think that we are the, the monarchy of our kingdoms, which is our property. And I, in regards to this, we are trying to maintain aesthetic value of the neighborhood. So anything being faced from the public's right away, looking in on the property is what we're looking to protect. You know, we try not to, we try not to be intrusive on our residents. Just to, we just try to maintain the, the property value. That being said, you know, if the car does still need to be in, cannot have any, windows cannot be broken, it cannot leak any fluid, you cannot be missing panels.
Wait a minute, now we're, now we're dead. I, I own two Chevrolets, man, what's that about?
So it's, it's one of those things like, if it's in the back of the yard, it still does have to be maintained. The grass does need to be cut around it. It still can't be considered a nuisance or cause any more issues, any more public nuisances. So as long as the vehicle is located in the backyard out of public view, that's what we're looking at.
All right. Any other questions for Ruben?
No, but I do appreciate you answering all my questions, Alex, you.
No, no problem.
Obviously, this is.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'm of approval of the ordinance changes.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the ordinance amending Court of Ordinances Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter Ninety, Abandoned Vehicles, Section Ninety Point Seventeen, Junk Motor Vehicle Regulations Removal Authorized. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Thank you, Ruben.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, town council.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, Ben.
All right, Marcia, thank you for being so patient with us.
Marcia.
Chevrolet didn't leak some.
It is?
Pretty much drill a hole in it. Something.
I want you to put in the packet. Um, I can, yeah, that'd be fun. I was gonna say, because I put the PowerPoint out there.
I have a new one.
Stop it.
I bought one of those nice.
How do I make it bigger now?
Have you ever seen the Chevy commercials were real?
Here we go.
There we go.
Real people on YouTube. Oh, it's really funny.
Oh, we're gonna look it up tonight. All righty. Everything looks good. Good evening.
Good kickoff.
No, it does, actually. I mean, it's, we've got, the report came in. We are starting out the year. We had a, a lot of money in this year. Obviously, with the, the expenditures, the, the ARPA funds and things that, that we had budgeted for. But things are looking good at this point. If you look at the three lines, the budgeted line is the red one. Green is the actuals, and then the blue line is last year. So our revenues right now, if we're looking at comparing it to prior year, you can see prior year is the blues. So we're pretty much well above that. We're about one point five million above last year's, and it's due to a couple of things, but mainly it's the, the money that we receive from Atrium, the contribution for the road repairs that we use through the interlocal agreement with Indian Trail to do those so that it's done at one time. If we're comparing to budgeted, we are higher than budgeted and mainly because Union County actually came in and we, at this same time last year, we hadn't received any ad valorem taxes. They were, they were running a little bit behind. This year, people paid their taxes earlier, I guess, so we got some money in, and you'll see how much on, on the next slide. And then we had a couple other things too. We had some TIA fees that came in at forty-four thousand, and we really didn't, we only had budgeted, I think, twenty thousand dollars. And then zoning fees, we've been collecting tons of zoning fees as far as the first part of the year compared to even last year and what we had budgeted. So we'll, we'll take a look at those, a little deeper dive on this next slide. These numbers are tiny, so I'm gonna put my glasses on and try and read it from the next one, from my paper. If we look down at the bottom right, we've actually collected about twenty-four percent of our budget. We have three months in, in looking at revenues, so you would think it would be right around twenty-five percent. But what's really driving this page, or off to the right there, you can see some percentages. The first one comes up with, well, there's, the two that really are driving this, I would say, are the TIA fees and the planning and zoning fees. When we're looking at comparing it to budget, and that's what that right column is doing, of talking about how much we've collected of the total that we have budgeted. And you can see the TIA fees, it's actually fifteen thousand for the year. We collected forty-four thousand. And planning, we had sixty-two thousand for the year as a budget compared to fifty-three. And only, you know, sixteen thousand was collected comparing it to last year. And as I mentioned on that previous slide, that first line there for ad valorem tax, we actually have gotten in two hundred and sixteen thousand compared to only a hundred, or eight hundred and thirty-one for prior year. And then looking down further, you can see that transportation contribution, that's also driving it up. So total for the general fund, there's nine point one five eight million compared to, that's budget, compared to what we've collected so far, twenty-two, or two point two million, and then only seven hundred and twenty thousand to prior year. And the other things down the bottom, those are fund balance appropriation, showing you how our budget does go up to the twelve million dollars altogether for revenue, but really it's just an appropriation to get it there. So any questions here?
Well, I took out the one point one million from the two point two to, to see actual, it was still three hundred and twenty-two thousand over revenue over the last year, so.
That's what I said. And it really is, we've got some investment income coming in too. Last year, as you know, the, the interest rates were horrible for investment wise. They were great if you're borrowing money, but when you're investing money, it wasn't that great for these past couple of years. We only had budgeted ninety-two hundred dollars for the year for investment income. And you can see we've, we've brought in about forty-two thousand year to date. So that's, that's gonna be a number where we're gonna have a pickup on revenue for this year for sure, especially the way things are going right now. Any questions? Okay. These are expenditures. Big picture wise, you know, you can see we're right in the middle there. That green line is our actuals. Red is our budget, so we are below budget, above what we spent last year. We are about one point two million below budget, and that's really because of, I would say, capital expenditures and palpable spending in the beginning of the year. We just haven't hit that yet. So there's some delays in that piece. And then in looking at it when we go compared to last year, the big difference is that one point one seven four million that we paid for two Indian, or for the road repairs with Indian Trail. So that's putting us above, well above last year. And that happened in August, so you can see that jump there for us. So we're, we're kind of following the same trend. If you looked at the slope of the line from August to September, it's about the same, but going, we started out pretty good compared to last year as far as being right in line with July's. But then that spike you see, just that one jump there in the green is, is due to that one point one seven four million going for transportation repairs. Any questions? Okay, deeper dive here. This is the expenditures by department. As I stated before, we're trying to keep, you know, just to give you an average and just over time, we're looking at, you know, about twenty-five percent of the budget you would, you would think would be paid by now since we're a quarter of the year through. And if we look at general government, the first one, the big driver here, we are right at twenty-three point three percent. And off to the right there, you can see within that, those categories that the only, the only category there that really goes over that twenty-five percent is in the other category. And that includes insurances. We pay our insurances in a lump sum at the beginning of the year. So we won't be paying any, any insurances other than what's been paid. There will be an audit or a comp audit that will see a little, either a little jump or a decrease. But once that audit is done, we will, you know, that usually comes around the, the October timeframe, November timeframe. But it's not gonna be anything compared to what we paid in each of the different categories. And then any dues that we have, the COG, you know, UNC School of Government has some dues that we pay too. Any type of dues for licensing, it usually, especially with government, with the government agencies, we're paying those in the beginning of the year. So that'll affect, you know, which, what those categories are and whether they're over that twenty-five percent mark for the year. In public safety, the big thing here, if we're looking, the bottom line on capital expenditures, we have spent forty percent of that budget, and that was to replace for the PD vehicles. And if you're looking a little bit above, above that, on the other line, again, insurances, they have a, there is a police liability insurance that's expensive, and, and it's paid at the beginning in, in July. And then if we go one more lineup, there's outside services, and that included, actually, there's computers that were purchased that our capital purchasing policy states that if it's under five thousand dollars, you don't capitalize it. Well, they were computers to put in the police cars. So they're actually coming out because it was paid to our vendor that is the computer line. It got. that, um, is, uh, the computer line. It got charged to that, so that's why it's in outside services. It's considered outside services, but it's really PD-related. That was, I mean, uh, computer-related. And that's twenty-four-point-one, uh, thousand there, twenty-four thousand. And then we do pay a retainer for an attorney there, so that's explaining the major expenditures within the police department.
Yeah, the, the, the two columns I always look at is year-to-date actual versus prior year-to-date.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I know that, uh, the year-to-date is above, 'cause some things become due earlier in the year versus the others. But, you know, I always look at that trend, and I know you do, too.
Exactly.
I just always wanna keep an eye on that trend.
Oh, yeah. Well, last year also, if you remember, we didn't buy the police cars until later in the year, so that, that expenditure there is.
It's the beginning of the year, and I'll even it out.
Mm-hmm. We did it in the beginning. Okay, next category, we have transportation. And the thing that jumps out there, you can see that, um, one-point-one-seven-five million that was paid out. That's really driving the, if you're looking at their total budget that was spent, that forty-three-point-three percent. It's because of that one, one, uh, one expenditure there. Uh, the other categories are well below. We really haven't, um, done much on the, uh, part of repair work yet, obviously, with, um, PAL bills. So it's, uh, it'll be coming, though. Next, we have public works. Again, they had only spent 10% of their budget through nine-thirty.
That's boy Brian, you're leading the team.
Kinda spend that money, Brian. Um, and mainly, if you're looking at his categories, the only one that's even close is the outside services, and that's mainly, we have annual inspections for the elevator, for, I mean, there's different annual inspections that we pay for, so that's all. The generator, the elevator, there's fire extinguishers, there's all kind of inspections that we do annually, and they always hit right in the beginning of the year. Next, I have planning and zoning. They're at twenty-seven-point-three percent of their total spend. They're a little bit above last year, and if you look at that category, they're, they were at seventy-eight thousand last year, eighty, eighty-four thousand, let's say, for this year, in that same period. It's mainly the capital outlay. Um, they purchased a, uh, plotter, which is definitely giving the town some new capabilities with, uh, digital scanning and everything. I think, uh, everyone was very happy to get that, and it's easier for them to review plans, look at plans. Someone comes in, they can pull it up on the computer. It's been great. So having that, uh, plotter scanner has been a, a real add to the department. Uh, park and rec, you can see that they haven't spent, I think they're the lowest, actually, looking at this now, six-point-nine percent.
Yeah, Brian's got it going. We gotta beat now.
Yeah, exactly. I think she's, she's been running without her, uh, the second-in-command there, so her program director, or program manager, or events coordinator, I guess it is. Um, but anyway, she, uh, there's, we've got some savings on, where, if you look at the first line, there's fourteen-point-eight percent was spent on wages and fringes, and, you know, there's definitely some cost savings there. Uh, the only line that we've got some, even close to the 25% would be events and advertising. And you know that we've had, um, a number of events this summer, summer events that came up, um, and also our Stallings Fest. There was some pre-buying for that as well, so, and, uh, I'd imagine this next month, we'll, we'll be hitting a lot more of that, uh, those, that expenditure on that line as well. Okay, so this is our summary here. There, there is one thing. On sanitation, um, I'm looking at the monthly trend on that, and there was a new count that we got in. We are really close to that budget. We're, we're going to go over. Um, we will be coming back, and, and it's been because of housing counts that, uh, that it changed. But it was a big surprise to me based on, you know, when we were going through the budget process, we thought we had enough in there, and we thought this is, you know, everything looks good. But the new bills and with them actually going out and counting the homes and doing the math and pushing it all through, there hasn't been any change in what they're charging us as far as, you know, contractually. I think it's the growth within the community here, and it's really, it's driving our costs up a little bit. So I'm going to, I'm gonna hold off until we get, you know, maybe three-quarters of the way, but I will show each month, you can see, um, that it's, right now, we're at twenty-five-point-two percent of the total spend. So I just, you know, I don't know how quickly they're going to be to add more homes to their number count, you know, as we get them on. You know, I don't know if they're paying more attention to it, uh, on the contractor side, but we may have to put maybe ten, twenty, fifteen, fifteen thousand, somewhere in there, I'm guessing, into that budget by the end of the year, so that we don't go over. And, you know, given some of the other things that we have above, that I said that we're, we're not, we don't, we really, really wouldn't have to, um, take it out of any type of fund balance, because we have, there's investment income that's over. You know, this could be a, a wash on our budget as far as, you know, not planning on pulling it out of, uh, fund balance, but actually increasing one of our revenue lines and, and also increasing that expense line, so that we don't come into a problem at the end of the year. Uh, debt service, we're good on that number as well. That's all interest payments. February, we will be making another payment to that, onto that. Right now, our debt is at, um, two-million-fourty-two-thousand, it's either six-hundred or eight-hundred, I'm sorry, I don't know the hundreds on that, but it's two-million-fourty-two-thousand. Uh, total expenditures, you can see that we've spent three-million-nineteen-thousand compared to one-point-five million to last year. If you add the, uh, the expenditure for, um, transportation for the road repairs, one-point-one-seven, and then some of those capital items on, on those other, um, as we went through PDs and whatnot, um, that gets us up to the, the, explaining that difference there. Any questions?
The debt services, is it next year that we could potentially?
Yes.
Pay off? Okay.
We have to make this payment, and I think that we have to wait five years, exactly. So five years. We've made, I believe this will be the fourth payment coming up.
Oh, it would just be the fourth, okay.
I think it's the fourth. Stormwater, it's, um, again, the county paid us money, or, or they gave us money, I should say. Taxpayers paid their, their debts earlier, so we got thirty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty, thirty-thousand-nine-thirty-two, compared to a hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars last year at this time. And then our expenditures, there's the big difference there. If you're looking at the repair line, it was forty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-eight compared to a hundred-and-forty-thousand. And that's really, we've had minor repairs of about seven-thousand dollars to date, and major repairs of almost a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand. And that's, you know, we're, we're addressing these, these, uh, we've got twenty-four additional projects on that list there, and we're addressing them one by one as they come up, and also the ranking of, you know, they, they're, you know, taking them, taking them on. And I know that council has, uh, set aside some additional funds this year, so I feel like, I'm hoping that, you know, this, this list starts dwindling away, and we don't have so many projects on there as we spend these funds to, to make these repairs in the town. Any questions on stormwater? This is always the big one here. Um, fund balance. We had a, a really good story this year, um, as far as fund balance goes. These balances actually have changed a tiny bit, um, with the audit report. I got a draft for the audit report, um, this past week, and they, I did not put them in this. So they're very, very slight. That beginning line for fund balance for general fund, instead of ten-thousand-six-ninety-four, it's like ten-thousand-six-eighty-six. So when you're talking about numbers that big, it's not, um, these were based on the estimate numbers before the, uh, the actual, um, audit adjustments went through. And, you know, so we might as well say the fund, general fund is pretty much where it's at. So if you're looking at it, the revenues were two-point-two million, we had expenditures of about three million, so obviously there was a decrease in fund balance of, uh, eight-hundred-and-two-thousand. And, um, if we're looking, and that's really, you know, we talked about what expenditures and revenues were for each of those, so, you know, the expenditures really are because of the, uh, really, at the beginning of the year, we are going to have a deficit there, regardless of which way, you know, we've explained why revenues are what they are and expenses. Every year, at the beginning, we're using cash and using, using that money, and, and it, you'll see it in the fund balance. Um, the capital project fund, it's, uh, there's no changes. That's for P3. That, hopefully, this year, we'll be able to close that fund once we, you know, get things straightened out with, uh, NCDOT. But right now, there was a change at the end of the year, um, to the nine-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand. We did accrue, um, the sixty-two thousand for the Duke energy bill, because it was a part, it was actually, I mean, Duke sent us that bill over a year ago, so we accrued it and put the expense in last year's. Um, it actually hit last year's books, so the sixty-two thousand should be coming off. That beginning balance is high by sixty-two thousand for P3. Uh, the ARPA fund, that's same thing. Auditor said that, um, since we got the funds within two months of, of the audit, and there was a contract with the government for to pay us, we accrued those funds in revenue for last year. So if you add the two, really, the five-million-one-sixty-seven, it should be the top line, um, on that chart, because we accrued, um, there's a little bit of interest that's in there. There's some interest on that money for this year, but the majority of it would be at the beginning of fund balance.
Marcia, that was a question I had, is that this money sitting in cash or invested, interest rates being what they are, are, is interest earned on this ten million dollars, where, where does it go? Back into this, is it staying in fund balance and reserves, or is it?
It, it actually, we, since we have it budgeted that we're gonna earn it, we budget it in the beginning of the year. You budget, you have a balanced budget, so if you have it down as revenue, there's gonna be an offsetting expense to it somewhere in the budget, you know, as, as a total.
So it's just showing up as a revenue?
But, as I told you before, we don't have much budgeted this year in interest and investment.
So the forty-two thousand interest is really from fund balance?
It should, it should drop to the bottom. I mean, it should drop into fund balance.
Okay.
Any excess.
Yeah, it will in the year. Good, okay.
And then you see the reduction in, uh, stormwater there. So if we're looking at what our balances are at the beginning of the year, if we adjusted those things that I was saying, what actually is starting at the beginning of the year would be about eighteen million, if you added two-point-five million to the fifteen. Uh, that four-million-eight would drop down to about two mil, two-million-three-hundred-thousand, because we're not getting that revenue from, um, the ARPA fund. It was in last year's. But bottom line is the same. Right now, we're sitting at a fund balance of about seventeen-point-two-million-one-nine-million. So we're in a great position. I haven't had to, this has been great the whole time I've been here. I haven't had to have a sad story about fund balance at all. Any questions? Okay, now we're talking cash. Cash is gonna be, um, it actually went up, um, from the prior month, or if you're looking at prior quarter, it went up by one-point-eight-two million. And really, what happened, while we accrued the revenue for those ARPA funds, we got the cash this year. So cash is going to be, it, it went up from, the ARPA funds went from two-point-five to, you know, the five-point-one-six-seven million in the account. Um, the other funds, they're pretty much steady-state. Uh, the PAL bill fund, we did get some money in, uh, in the first quarter, so we got one little, it was at about seven-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand at the beginning of the year, so it did go up quite, uh, you know, some for the revenue that we got. And then also, PNC, you can see, um, we have, all together in all the accounts, we have about three-point-six-million. So, uh, that increase that I was talking about, uh, from the ARPA funds, we are gonna have to take off from that, uh, the, the difference between those revenues, you know, both in the, in the stormwater fund and general fund. 'Cause our revenues are coming in at a, a certain amount. Obviously, we have expenditures that are higher, so your cash balances are gonna be going down. But the two-point-five million we got from ARPA really helps, so, um, we do have a total, if you're looking at total change, of one-point-eight-two million, the increase is, not the, not the entire amount from ARPA went up in cash. But it, it really, you know, like you said, it's, it correlates very well, the cash and fund balance, it correlates. Those numbers are close, they're never equal, but they're, you know, they're usually very close in, in numbers, round numbers, anyway. So we're both at about seventeen-point-four in cash and seventeen-point-two in fund balance. So in summary, um, general fund revenues, um, we had two-point-two-two million. They're significantly higher than last year. Um, you know, this, I said on, it was because of the receipt of the ARPA funds, that's not it. I meant to put Atrium funds, and I apologize. It is Atrium that's causing that, the, the one-point-one-seven-million. The next, uh, line, we have, uh, the general fund expenditures are, are below, one, one-point-one-six million below, um, budget, and they're one-point-five above prior fiscal year because of the road repairs. Our cash increased, um, significantly from June thirtieth, over a million dollars. Um, if you're looking at what we've received in our tax revenues, which are the two largest revenues for us, ad valorem taxes and then sales and use, um, we've only collected 5% of our budgeted, uh, ad valorem taxes and 10.3% of the sales and use tax. Sales and use tax is another one that I fully expect to have a, a pickup on, as far as what we can start. It was a very conservative budget on the sales and use tax. There's only one month of, um, revenues that we've received to date, so one divided by twelve, you'd think one-twelfth of it, 'cause they're pretty consistent each month. I mean, they're within, say, five-thousand dollars of the month before. Um, so really, if, this is 10%, so it's more than, than one-twelfth, for sure. You know, so I feel that we will have, you know, additional revenue pickup there. And then stormwater fund, we've only collected six-point-three percent of budgeted revenues, and, uh, we've expended like nineteen-point-five percent of budgeted costs. But we've, you know, this year, we do have additional funds. We are expecting to use fund balance, um, because we, we had, uh, we did appropriate funds, so we should have, we're expecting revenues to be higher than, than expenditures at the end of the year. And that's pretty much the end of my talk here. Any questions?
Well, thank you, Marcia, as always.
You're welcome. Yes.
I apologize. I can't do the math right now. A little late, tired, I guess. But anyhow, you could probably tell me real quick, if we had no ARPA calculations in this budget, how would we be compared to last year? Are expenditures and revenues, are they?
Well, ARPA funds, we have one point, we have one-point-eight million. Uh, when we're looking at what we've appropriated, it wouldn't affect revenues at all. I think what you're gonna see.
But basically, fund balance.
Mm-hmm. It will. And it hasn't, we haven't spent it yet, really. I mean, when you're looking at, we haven't hit that point where we're even gonna see the funds that, you know, I can't say that, you know, PD vehicles or something like that, you know, we did, there are some of the things on the list that we had said that we were gonna use them for, but most of it hasn't been spent yet. I mean, you can see that we're well below expenditures. So i-if you're looking at, you know, what, if I took it away, it's gonna be, it's gonna be harder to say, because I can't, I can't pull a number out of revenue right now.
Okay.
You know, revenue is gonna be revenue, and you never really, when I give these reports, you'll never see where the, um, that money coming back in is gonna be considered revenue. It won't be on there. You won't see it.
I was just looking in particular on the cash and investment balances, where the second line is the ARPA funds of five-point-one-six-seven.
Yes. There is one. There is one thing you will see. I, I, we, the last time that, uh, council met, or the time before, I think it was the last time, um, at the last meeting, you passed that we could go ahead and make our first, um, reimbursement of funds. And that was like six hun, I think, no, it was four hundred and ninety-three thousand, I think. I'm pretty sure that's the magic number. But that will be coming in. I haven't transferred it from that investment fund yet. It will be done this week. But it'll go from, it'll go from the investment account with, uh, the North Carolina, uh, trust, not the trust, it's NCCMT. Um, but it's gonna go from the general fu, or the, uh, ARPA fund account into the general fund account, so that you'll see that bump up. You'll see the one category, you will see the ARPA fund balance go down in the general fund. That's kinda moving it into the unrestricted area of, of money.
Follow up on David's point, uh, talking about the trends again. So what, what I'd like to see after the close of the second quarter is your projection on revenue.
Okay.
Best guess for revenue for next year. With that, you know, we won't have the ARPA funds, so, just to give us an idea before we go into March.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Just, just wanna, you may have to catch me offline, but, but I'm back on sort of the, the interest rate environment. If, if you take the first quarter interest, which is well exceeding budget, it's forty-two thousand and you take that four quarters and it's a hundred and sixty or so. I'm, I'm trying to figure out, like, we have seventeen million and we call it cash and investments, maybe that's the difference. But I guess I'm wondering, interest rates are now, you know, six-month CDs are paying three and a half and two-years treasuries are paying four and a half. These is really safe things. Even some bank checking accounts are paying three percent. So if I did three percent of one seventy-four, seventeen point four million, I'm up to half million dollars in interest, but we're projected to be one sixty. Are, are you able to take your money and look for three to four percent money that's safe and short-term or no?
You can, but it's very restrictive.
But even cash at PNC?
P, oh, PNC, we pay fees each month. We do.
Fees.
We, oh, we pay fees. And I, carrying a balance of any time, uh, somewhere between one point five and one eight million, somewhere in there. I mean, just in the general fund account is what I'm talking about.
Okay.
What it takes into consideration, every time you get an ACH from the state, they charge you to collect it. Every time you send money ACH, they charge you and collect it. Every check you, you write and, you know, I mean, and that's just, we could really, what I, and you know, and that was the one thing, I know council's aware that I'm about to retire, um, that was the one thing I put on the slate for the new person. There's, well, two things actually. We really need to look for a new bank. Uh, I'm not happy with PNC.
But there's the fees, but then there's the current rate of return on your money. It should be offsetting your fees in a big way, I would think now, but if it-
No.
Okay. So I agree with you, you need to find a new bank.
No.
Yeah.
I, I'm not happy with PNC.
Okay. Okay. I'll leave it there. But it seems like the interest rates are our friend now. We should be banking significant interest. We haven't been able to in a decade, so it's good.
And it's something you can do jointly. It's just, it's, um, it's a, it's an undertaking to get a new bank because you have so many things tied to your, to the town's bank account. You, you just don't even, between payroll, the state, the federal governments, all these websites where you have your checking account numbers and your ACH and your money, all the grant money that we get through PD, I mean, it's, there's probably like forty agencies that you would have to reach out to and do, make some changes. It's, it's a, it's an undertaking. It's almost like putting in an accounting system or something, you know, it, it is. It's a major undertaking, so.
All righty, Mar, Martian, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Brad?
Yeah, last up, thank you. I would ask council to, um, ask staff to direct, uh, or just to study and bring back some proposals for some planting and a roundabout in District Six. If you're out in District Six, at the Solace Apartment Complex, that was built after much ado, few years ago, uh, the project looks nice. I think everyone would agree and it's got a nice, as Eunice mentioned earlier, Greenway connection with a styling sign right at the road. The eyesore though is the roundabout, built by the state, feels like it's incomplete, but I know that it is not. It is complete. It's missing sidewalks on one side, that will come with development on the corner. It's missing a crosswalk to safely reach the park, that will only come with development on the other corner. But the other thing it's missing is just, um, maintenance and planting in the roundabout. So I would ask you to support my request to have staff do some preliminary back-of-the-napkin kind of penciling of not only the cost, but what drives the cost would be what type of plantings would be low maintenance, perhaps native, doesn't require a lot of maintenance because we'd be assuming the maintenance of it if we planted. It's always in my mind been part of the thinking of our landscape. Um, we had talked with NCDOT about the types of plantings around, around the hospital , uh, right-of-ways and medians. An earlier conversation was, let's use that same, um, color pattern, let's use that same styling sort of look and feel at the roundabout. That may be too expensive. I think I'm just asking for your thoughts or get some thoughts on how to make it look better than it does. We sent you some pictures earlier in the week and go reference those or I'll send them to you again if you like. That's it.
All right. Comments?
You sent it in an email?
Um, I think staff sent out the pictures earlier. What do you need?
Well, it's barren grass.
Oh, I thought he was saying, I thought he was saying he sent like examples.
Oh, no, it's just a picture of the-
Okay. Yes, I got that.
Picture of the bear.
I thought you were saying you-
Oh, no, no, they don't need-
Sent like examples or something.
She thought I had pictures of what I thought it should look like and I don't.
It's on the presentation, bro.
No.
Oh, what it would look like.
I'm sorry. The current state, yeah. So I'd, I'd like to entertain a motion. Can I make the motion please? Yeah. To have direct, direct staff to, um, do some preliminary work on a cost estimate and landscaping plan for the roundabout at Chestnut and Matthews Matthews Road.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shoal, uh, to, uh, direct staff to, uh, investigate plantings, landscape plan at Chestnut and Matthews Matthews Roundabout. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right. And, uh-
Adjourn.
One thing I forgot real, real quick since we're, uh, I forgot to mention this, Alex and I met with, uh, County Matthews. A lot of, a lot of y'all have been getting emails wanting us to vote on, uh, the project in Matthews. What's it called, Santee, Santa, Sante? And, uh, so Alex and I met with him. I mean, it's a fantastic development, but it is intense. So, uh, what I was interested in were DOTs requiring them to do and that's not much. So, uh, maybe, I don't know if that's gonna come, but, uh, Matthews Town Council is voting tonight on that project and-
Wow, really?
The mayor didn't think it was gonna pass based on the opposition they're getting, but, uh, you know, that's one, two neighborhoods, so we'll see what happens. So we'll keep everybody involved, but-
But of course, they get the cool, the cool development, you know, they get approached. Whereas we get like some fast food restaurants and apartments, you know.
It's a nice mixed use.
But that's what I'm saying, of course Matthews would get it, not us.
Well, Mr. Pappas, he's the guy I do talk to, everybody brings something nice, so, uh, all righty.
They have sewer though.
No, they have sewer.
They do have sewer. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Mr. Shoal?
I'll second.
Mrs. Groome, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, have it. All right, thank y'all.
And you think they're not-
Good job.
Yeah.